February 4th, 2013, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:05. We have a quorum present. Councilman Schrader will not be in attendance this evening. Councilman Struthers should be here shortly, but we're gonna go move forward. The first item is to discuss and provide input to suggested changes to the park ordinance. Mr. Sly?
Thank you, Mayor. It's been helpful in the past to put ordinances and initiatives on, in a workshop environment, so that we can openly discuss those things and solicit input from the council. And in this case, the park ordinance obviously has a lot of attention, and rightfully so. Our parks are nestled in neighborhoods all across our community. And we've got to do a really good job of coming up with a park ordinance that would allow the police department to enforce infractors. And so, we challenged Parks and Rec Department and the Parks Board to come up with a fashion of some kind of a park ordinance. And what you have been provided in your packet is a start to that process. Ordinarily, Adam Adams would be here to present this particular action to you. Unfortunately, he and Tony Harmio are both at prepaid training events that conflicted with this date, so he's out of town. So, in that light, I've asked Larry Linsner, who is the president of the Park Board, to step in on Adam's behalf to kind of give you a historical perception of what we've gone through to this point. We have actually reviewed upwards of eighteen other communities' park ordinances. And we tried to find communities that had dog parks and similar features that we have through our park infrastructure. And hopefully, what the Park Board has done over the last three months or so is gleaned best practices and pieces from various communities and put that into this product that you've got tonight. And what I'd like to do at this point is turn the mic over to the president of the Park Board, Larry Linsner, and have him go through that document with you. And again, this is a workshop environment, so as we go through, if you have issues or concerns or ideas that you would like for the Park Board to consider moving forward, you know, this would be an appropriate time to have that interchange. We would love to be able to bring back to you for action a park ordinance the end of February. As you know, our, you know, spring is right around the corner. I think they're already having baseball signups, I'm not sure yet, but soccer is getting... Soccer is moving forward, so we would certainly like to have some structure, an enforceable structure, before all of that gets into high gear. So, Larry, go ahead and...
Well, Madam Mayor, Council, and Town Manager Sly, thank you very much for having me this evening. This is a workshop format that is, again, for you, Council, and I'm real excited because I think many of you have been here for council meetings that went on and on and on. And I love this workshop format because we can get all of your questions, concerns, answered, get all of your feedback in a concise manner. And then, the board, in this case, the Parks Board will come back. And my understanding of this process, and kind of give you a little bit of history, is town staff recognized the need after the citizens were kind enough to pass the Parks Bond. Combined with the PID dollars that were out there was roughly $7.4 million that has been mostly, we've got a few little things left to do, but mostly been allocated. And we've seen a significant growth in our Parks and Rec facilities, which is outstanding because I don't know what we'd have done today without it with all the dramatic growth that we've had in families here in Trophy Club over the last two years. So, with that being said, it was time for the Parks Board, now that those facilities and the construction of those facilities is pretty much complete, to look at an ordinance along with many of the other communities. And as Town Manager Sly mentioned, there's eighteen communities that we looked at. There's no sense in the little Trophy Club Texas reinventing the wheel. Let's look at what eighteen other communities have done, what's relevant for our community, look at that and incorporate that into something that all of you can look at, be proud of, and something, more importantly, that we can administer throughout the town in a fair and just manner to make sure our facilities are safe foremost and that they're properly maintained in a safe and amenable manner so that they're still around for our citizens in the future. So, with that said, town staff started about five months ago on this process. The Parks Board got involved at some lower levels about three months ago. And then, our last Parks Board meeting was almost exclusively dedicated to going through this ordinance page by page and seeking feedback from all of the Parks Board members that were in attendance, which we had pretty close to the full Parks Board in attendance when we went through this. So, we're bringing this to you tonight in the workshop format for your feedback. My understanding, it'll come back to the Parks Board for some other work once we get your thoughts and feedback, and then back to this council for a vote, hopefully, by the end of February. So, with that said, I mean, you've got it on your packets, and I know I don't need to sit up here and read it to you verbatim, but what I do is I'll just highlight each section and have you, if you've all have any comments related to it, or do you'd like me to give you feedback on the thoughts or some of the reasoning and logic behind that particular ordinance, please feel free to comment. You know, I think the definitions is pretty self-explanatory. I don't think we need to go through those, but I think, of course, it's important to have those. Oh, Mr. Rose, in the definitions.
Very quickly, as I look through the entire ordinance and I put the note at the top of definitions, do we need to identify specifically which parks are involved? I mean, because you've got the linear trail. And I don't know whether that's termed as a park, but it has some park-like facilities in it. And then, the other item I had in the definition section is under baseball facilities. In the definitions, you specifically mentioned Indy East and Indy West.
Correct.
I would personally take that out, and not, because if you want to have a baseball field at another venue, then it would not require a change in the ordinance. So, I would just scratch that within little...
Or, or, you might want to leave that and then say, "Or any additional facility used for." So that we've got that clear.
You could work it both ways.
Okay, great. That's great feedback. With regard to highlighting each individual part, from talking to the other towns, sometimes less is more and more is less. So, in that, in the spirit of that, the less is more was that this is all-encompassing Parks and Rec ordinance. So, unless otherwise highlighted, that incorporates any land that's dedicated or owned, you know, by the town and managed as a park facility. So, that's kind of where that came from, keeping it pretty broad. And then, where necessary, where you've got specific facilities, and we kind of honed in on specific things and highlighted Harmony Park, for example, such as, you know, hours that are open when you're having, you know, public use, et cetera. Okay, so in section 1-10-2...
Claire?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I looked down.
Under park property. Same section. I think you have a little contradiction in there. And I think if you added the line that you use every place else within the corporate limits of the town in that section, because the first sentence says, "Shall I mean a park, playground, athletic facility, or any other area in the town owned or used by the town?" And that kind of indirectly incorporates TCP.
That's true.
And so, I would, I would put within the corporate town limits in that section to clarify that we're just talking about town parks.
I think we meant, I think they meant to include Trophy Club Park. You want your park ordinances to include that.
Don't we have Trophy Club Park ordinance as separate?
Yeah, no. Kind of what the situation is, from my recollection, Councilmember Mayor, we did mean to include Trophy Club Park from the standpoint of the motorized recreational vehicles, et cetera. Where you're kind of referencing is the federal guidelines, of course, trump anything that the town would do that is in the lease agreement that we have. So, I don't think there are any conflicts, but there is, there are some ordinances, requirements in Trophy Club Park that are dictated by the Corps of Engineers and the federal government. I don't think they conflict with this, but we do have the, I don't know if the authority is too strong a word, but we can certainly ordinance and require, you know, certain activities to occur and not occur inside the Trophy Club Park.
Well, then, I'm confused.
Okay.
Because I was pretty sure, I'm hard to confuse, too. No, I'm easily confused.
No, trust me, you can get confusing.
Because in the next section, you're talking about the parks within the town limits. So, if you do that, and then I get back over here on prohibited things like ATV vehicles and all that, if that's including Trophy Club Park, then you can't have your ATV events and stuff over in your motorized vehicle things in Trophy Club Park, because it doesn't say, "Just an organized event," it just says you can't have them.
Yeah, I think it highlight, the one thing, and you're exactly correct, we're kind of a unique town here in the sense that you've got Trophy Club Park and you've got, you know, our town ordinances. So, I think we'll go back and revisit that with your feedback. But I think we need to be very clear because there are certain activities that we definitely want to restrict, such as dogs off leashes, that type of stuff, picking up dog instrument, things like that, wanna, we want to branch that out to the entire Parks and Rec facilities that we maintain and manage, which would include Trophy Club Park. But there are definitely certain ordinances and things that would be, you know, strictly within the domain of the town.
Let me see, guess you add a section in here someplace that would just address the activities at Trophy Club Park that won't be addressed in the regular, because right now, it's confusing.
Well, maybe the suggestion might be, would you guys relook at this and make sure it's clear?
Yes.
Between with Trophy Club Park versus the rest of the town.
Gotcha.
Because we do need to have some rules in there.
Yes.
However you decide to make it clear.
Just for, just to clarify, I'm pretty sure we have a TCP ordinance on the books today. And we'll go back and clean that up.
Okay.
I think the original intent for this particular ordinance was for those parks within the corporate limits of the town.
And if that's the case, then let's state that.
Yeah, no problem. We'll clean that up. It's not a problem at all.
We'll clarify that. I want to make sure we've got something on the books for TCP as well.
Yeah, because I know from the standpoint of the Parks Board, when we were discussing this, you know, I think it was pretty muddled as well. I think there were certain activities that we'd like to restrict across all of the facilities. But if there's a separate ordinance, you know, that we didn't discuss that in detail that evening, but we'll clean that up. Not a problem. It's great feedback. Through the definitions.
You know, almost a page, too.
I know. Section 110-2, property, park property generally prohibited acts. Does anybody have any comments? Yes, sir.
I have a few. Go ahead.
Need to, need to get the attorney in on this one, but it looks to me like the last two sentences are either redundant or conflict. And I'm not sure...
Which?
Of the first paragraph, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Where, "The following acts are prohibited on all park property, period. And then, except as otherwise provided, it shall be unlawful." Well, if it's prohibited, you would think it would be unlawful, and it's...
And actually, I made that redundancy, and the reason I did is because when I'm drafting complaints, I need the prohibited language. It helps me out in drafting a complaint. But the reason that it was, "It shall be unlawful," is just so that we could bullet without complete sentences that list.
Okay.
It was done on purpose.
And I guess this very, this very first one, A, talks about riding, so I guess that shows that it isn't Trophy Club Park.
I know, it's interesting, because, you know, in my notes here, this deals with potential equestrian issues. So, an unleashed dog in Trophy Club Park that comes upon a couple of horses riding back on the east side would be a potential hazard to both. The dog, more importantly, probably the horse rider, who might not be on the horse if something happens. So, we'll definitely have to...
But it says to ride.
Do you have paintball guns back there, too?
No, no paintball guns.
Okay, I thought y'all had the paintball tournaments and stuff.
No, and we have not had any special events. But again, a lot of the language in here is at the discretion, you know, of special event, special event permits, so that doesn't mean never that we couldn't have a special event paintball thing back there. But as of right now, for you to just drive in and start shooting around, it's not authorized under this ordinance.
I had a question on this, because I did have a question from someone. As far as discharging firearms or bow and arrow or whatever, is that, or is that not allowed in Trophy Club Park, hunting?
Hunting is allowed in Trophy Club Park.
I thought so. And we don't have the option to prohibit that.
Yeah, we don't have any, there's duck hunting that is authorized in Trophy Club Park. And I think there are supple, a couple special years bow hunting permits for deer that are issued each year. But we don't have any domain over that, and, you know, I don't know that it's been an issue in the past. I mean, I hear them when duck season starts right out on the lake.
Yeah, somebody, somebody asked me about it recently because they saw someone walking in.
But again, I think you're right. We're gonna have to, we're gonna... I think that probably the thing we're gonna have to do, and this is good feedback, because I think when this is written by town staff, a lot of the focus is, is inside the town and our own facilities. But then, I think your brain kind of moves out into other concerns that we've had as a town, because we do oversee Trophy Club Park. So, I think that pulling out and having a specific section dedicated to Trophy Club Park of do's and don'ts, I think will probably help. And if there's already an ordinance, then maybe we can just reinforce that and add some new language to that. So, that's all very good feedback.
I think for purposes tonight, though, we want to focus on those amenities within the corporate limits of the town.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Okay.
Again, on B, carry any firearm. I don't know how the concealed handgun permit works with that.
You can't prohibit concealed handgun carrying.
Okay.
Chief? Unless they post a 30.06 sign, or we're selling 51% of our income comes from alcohol in the parks, they can't prohibit a concealed carrying person, right?
Right. They will need to post 30.06 sign.
So, they, but they can do that?
They can post a sign, yes.
Okay.
I was just...
Is that answer?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So, are you asking to post a sign?
Yeah, my assumption in that situation is that, you know, in other town ordinances of the eighteen that we reviewed, that that was probably a common language in the ordinance. So, we adopted it because it made sense. But, you know, I think this council will have to determine if we want to post the signs that would be necessary to enforce that.
The posting of that sign will prohibit concealed licensees, concealed handgun licensees from carrying inside the park.
Okay.
You can prohibit people from carrying that are not licensees, but you do need the sign if they are.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
So, and what we're saying by then, this then, is that we, the ordinance recommends that we do not allow them to carry.
That's what other communities of the eighteen have gone, and that's where Adam is going down that road. Now, I'm all from the great state of Texas, and you never know what's gonna happen. But, you know, people are licensed and authorized to carry them. I'm not, I'll let the town council make that decision.
I can get you the, all the information on that sign, so that you can have them, or the town can have them made and posted.
Especially not at baseball games.
You know, having spent like twelve or fifteen years in the Little League system...
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I can speak to this issue pretty well. I don't think we want any concealed handguns in the stands.
The sign outside the door, the 30.06, that's the sign.
Great. All right, awesome.
Okay, number three, number C?
Number C, yes, ma'am.
What's the point? Like, for instance, somebody has a remote control sailboat and he wants to operate it in one of the amenity lakes, what would be the issue?
Okay, so in C, most of these items are potentially hazardous. Now, when you're talking about flying, the flying planes, you know, I think that's pretty self-explanatory. They could potentially hazardous and hurt somebody, plus there's a little bit of noise pollution with those as well. From the boat perspective, all the boats, the lakes that we have are irrigate, several of them that we're responsible for are irrigation. So, they have pumps and drains, and the issue has been that if your boat gets stuck out there, runs out of gas, breaks, you will have kids or people going into the lakes. And going into the lakes could be a very big hazard and potential, not only hazard, but liability for the town. So, restricting any type of activity on those lakes that will result in them potentially going into the lake is probably a good thing to do. Yes, sir.
And this one is strictly from a point of standardization on C, where it says Director of Parks and Recreation. Delete of Parks and Recreation because definitions Director defines it as Director of Parks and Recs.
Okay.
The rest of them throughout the ordinance are Director.
Okay, got it. Somebody helping me with this, because I don't have that...
No, I'm making it.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Sly. Appreciate it. I'm taking them, but...
I know we're asking a lot of questions.
No, that's okay. This is great.
As I read this, what I felt like, you talked about eighteen found, you found everything anybody could possibly prohibit and put it in here.
Well, I...
And I guess I just felt some of it's...
Are doing the park.
And prohibited it.
I mean, I think, I think from the standpoint, you know, of town staff in the town, there's common sense that are built into these. Okay, so, we're asking the, our police department to also use their discretion upon certain things that may or may not occur in and amongst people who are coming and utilizing these facilities. So, better to put it in here and then use your own discretion to determine if you're gonna enforce it to that level. But if it's not in here and you do run into a problem, you don't have any legal or any, you know, recourse to go to our police department or other Parks and Rec Department people to address the issue. And I think, you know, being a member of, or citizen of Trophy Club for many years, there has been one thing after another that has come up over time that is not in our ordinances, not in our language, that handcuffs, you know, our public servants here in making decisions. So, better, unfortunately, in this day and age, to move to a more, you know, in restricted mode and then authorize through special use permits or through the Parks and Rec Director, which you see throughout here, you know, giving that, or, you know, through special events or whatever, given the flexibility there on that side, as long as it's communicated and blessed by the town and staff and this council ultimately.
As we discuss the things, there are a lot of things that's at the direction or wavered by the Director. One, I want to make sure that the town manager is comfortable with that level of authority on all those things. And the second thing is, if you're comfortable with that, then do we need something in the ordinance that says something about appeals will be made at the town manager level?
Adam and I actually had that discussion. And, you know, if it comes to turning lights off on the baseball field or allowing something that would otherwise be prohibited without his approval, I'm very comfortable with that.
Okay.
And, you know, if the decision is not what the customer was hoping for, I have no problem appealing it to the town manager. I mean, we can do that.
I wish to address that subject. My biggest concern with this whole ordinance is that thirteen times, thirteen times in this ordinance, we allow the Parks Director or his designee to either interpret, change, or define something about this ordinance. And I think we don't do that in any other ordinance.
It's always Town Manager or Designee.
And I have a problem with that, and nothing, I wish Adam was here. I can't get Adam to return a phone call. So, I have a little problem with telling him thirteen different times that he can, it is up to him. I was, and we got, I'm sorry, but we went through this last summer during baseball, with those baseball lights being on and there's nobody over there playing, nobody's taking care of it. And I'm gonna talk very strongly when we get to the lighting section, that we define a turnoff time, and it's not interpretable. The lights go off at a particular time, whatever that time is. And I'm sure some of the citizens, we want to be happy and balance the baseball stadium or the baseball players and their stuff. But the residents have, have a right to expect that at some point in the evening, those lights are gonna go off.
Well, if, if we change the ordinance to Town Manager or his designee, we're still talking about the same person.
I want to define time. I want a defined...
I understand that.
We're gonna get to that.
I understand what you're saying there, but what I'm talking about is, you know, several times in this ordinance, it, it allows for the Director of Parks and Recreation some purview to allow for a special event or something like that.
I think...
And if it's, and if, and if we change that to the Town Manager or his designee, it's still the same person.
But you're gonna end up designating Adam.
That's right.
And so, I'm back to where I was a while ago. I think if there needs to be an exception, it needs to be done when there's a special event planned and it's written down. But still, there is something to find that, I don't want to, here's my, here's my concern. They're playing a baseball game, and it's the ninth inning, and there's two outs, and the last hitter's up, and 10:30 comes along. So, we, we want to, or let's say it's, we've already extended it, and it's the, now it's the dead... Oh, go ahead and play and finish. We can't do that. We, we can't do that. We have to, we don't run our other ordinances that way, where we get to jicky them around. So, that's just my feeling on this. I just, I don't like having an ordinance that thirteen times gives somebody, whomever that person would be, the authority to change the ordinance or interpret it the way they want to. That's my two cents.
I mean, do you want to get to that, or...
Well, well, I'm not talking about the lights or anything now, but in the basic ordinance, I mean, it's kind of funny, but at the same time, here's, I'll give you my side of this, and we're not talking lights now, just everything else, okay? My feeling is that we said no, prohibited so many things. If you took an absolutely hard line, it would be much more difficult to figure out what you can, where you don't want to leave yourself in a trap, because there are things that we do during an event or when somebody rents the park or something like that. And if we, I think it would be extremely difficult, without having that latitude, to define all of the parameters in this situation.
But based on that, my head and organs, just ask the Parks Director.
Because you have to give them the basis to be able to control it. That's the point, is that giving the police the basis to be able to control it.
I don't agree.
Well, okay.
Well, I would like to say that the Park and Rec Director reports to the city manager. It's his job to run the parks. So, it seems to me like that he would be the one designated to make decisions. And if there is a need to variance, then he or she would interact with the manager as well as maybe the council if that was called for. But he's, that person is the manager of parks. That's the way I see it. And his, so therefore, his, that person, that will be designated fifteen times in there.
Well, but the chief answers to the town manager. And he enforces the laws, but he doesn't get the latitude to interpret the law the way he wants to interpret it. If he wants to, if he wants to say, "Well, today, we're gonna do 45 miles an hour because we're going from 35, then I'm just gonna do 45 today." I, I just think, if we're gonna have an ordinance, let's have an ordinance.
Well, we didn't put that in every case. I think we put it in cases where an exception would make sense. And, you know, for example, we didn't, we said here, "To swim, bathe, wave, wade in or pollute the water of any pond, lake, or stream." There's no exception there. But to plant or place any tree, shrub, rock, building, monument, or other structure except in specifically designated areas for such purpose by the Director. That's something that makes sense that you might want to, you know, in one sense, this is a hard rule. In the other sense, well, there's maybe a reason you might want to allow it. And you've given them that latitude. That's the way I'm looking at it.
Well, in that case, Madam Mayor, you know, we've had situations, whether it be Arbor Days or where we've actually had citizens plant a tree on Park's property and cultivate that tree and take care of that tree, and then they, it's automatically assumed that it's their tree. And unfortunately, something happens. We need a new sidewalk, we got something going on. And now, they're here before this council, talking about you destroying their tree or the trees, when it actually, you know, that's not their property. And that's happened in the past. So, from the designee, if the Parks Director knows that, hey, you know what? There's nothing wrong in that particular location, under these particular circumstances, planting a tree because you want to donate a tree to the towns, you know, Tree City USA, then let the Parks Director have the autonomy and the flexibility to be able to do that.
And that's, there's my point, just that some things, it's appropriate to have the flexibility and some things it's not, and that's what I think we're trying to do.
And that's, again, that's a whole part of this workshop, is for all of you to give us this feedback. And then, you know, it's gonna be coming back to the Parks Board and back to you as well. So, I think we can definitely explore that.
There's a dramatic difference between a police department and Parks and Rec, okay? Parks and Rec by definition is gray. It is, it's a gray area. I mean, people come with creative ideas all the time that we haven't even thought about yet. And, you know, we want to be able to have the flexibility to pursue the idea, if it's a good idea or not, right?
I just want to point out, Mike, it wasn't managed last year when I'm referring to lights. But the lights weren't managed last year, so, and we'll get to lights in a minute. But without, but without...
But to give, to go to your example about the lights, and I'll wait until...
We can get there. I'll wait to the lights.
We'll get there.
Yes.
I, we were talking, I talked about the Director. I can move on down the page just a little bit. H. It says, yeah, "For such purposes by the..." We need to add Director in there. Get you to 14, Danny.
Where? Oh, typo, yeah, Director. There's a typo. I did spot another typo in here as well. There's definitely a few typos that need to be cleaned up. I think you guys all know that this is the draft. But thank you, Councilmember Rose, for helping me clean that up. Any other comments on C, D, E, and F? I mean, the plants, the swim and bathe, "To make or kindle a fire."
I think under the make and kindle a fire, I think we're gonna add, one thing that came up post this is to during burn bans, to add some language around burn bans that would be, you know, state or county driven, that we would, of course, enforce those. And there would be no, even in city designated areas, no fires during those periods of time. So we'll clean that up as well. We kind of caught that late. Discharge any noxious gray water, leave litter. I'm on J. K. You know, this is kind of a, the K is the general catch-all to give the police department the authority to pretty much take care of any public nuisance issues that may be occurring. I mean, there have been incidents, and as you bring, I don't know what's kind of how I want to phrase this. When you bring certain people together at athletic events and it gets heated, there can be everything from opposing teams to formerly married moms and husbands that can cause lots of problems. And I've been there and seen it. So we want to make sure that the police department has complete authority and the flexibility and use their judgment to remove people from the premises if necessary. Hopefully not handcuffs, but hopefully just time to maybe for you to leave in that case.
As you remember, counsel, over the holidays, this would give the police enforcement ability, you know, during the holidays when the kids are, don't have anything else to do and there's college kids coming home for the holidays and that kind of thing, there's a national game of fugitive that's spread across the entire country. And it's glorified cops and robbers and that caused problems in our community this past holiday. And, you know, they were using our parks to assemble, to figure out what they were gonna do, and then they would spread to the four winds inside the community. And we had no authority to, I mean, they were, they had every right to be there, even though that they were rustling around on people's property and rustling their fences and gates and that kind of thing. You know, if we found them doing that, that was one thing. But, you know, if, if we, this would give us some, some teeth to be able to disperse that group and you'd be done with it.
Does anybody have any further questions on this page, K, L, or M? Comments? I'm gonna go to the next page, N through O.
I have it on N.
Yes, sir.
The last, last phrase there says, or any other public property. I think that may exceed the, the.
Authority of the Parks Ordinance. Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, the stat, the stat, yeah, so.
Makes sense. Okay. Anybody have any questions or concerns around the sale of food or drinks or concessions or?
I thought that was a little bit restrictive.
Here's, here's another example of, you know, approved, written agreement. I mean, we've had, I, the only issue I can think of that's come up, I mean, we, we get requests from vendors for people and usually it's related to a school function. So for example, and this is again where the authority of the Parks and Rec Director can be of, you know, guidance and help. So a group, one destination imagination. And a group of kids at Beck Elementary, it's a big deal. They were going to nationals, going up to Tennessee or Kentucky, I think it was Tennessee. And they asked if they could come out and sell snow cones during the baseball games, to which we were more than happy to allow, you know, citizens, young children to come out and raise money for an event that, of course, represents our town. So the ability to do that. However, for the ice cream man to back up into the parking lot right at the front of the, you know, by the facility when they're selling those things as concessions, you know, that can be a problem. Or an unauthorized, you know, selling of items could be a problem. But again, the discretion of the Parks and Rec Director in this particular area, if it's a, you know, school-driven or fundraiser, a community event, they check with the other park. The other thing about the Parks and Rec Director is when these things come up, they will reach out or Adam will reach out to other organizations that could be impacted and get their feedback. And most of the time, most of the time, of course, here in our great community, it's not an issue. So that's another example where some discretion is probably advised. Is that answer your question?
Yeah, it says, I was someplace, and where was it? Somewhere in town. And they were trying to raise money for hunger, to donate to hunger, and they were told they weren't allowed to sell homemade cookies.
Right.
I thought that was a little restrictive. I mean, everybody has bake sales.
I'm with you.
But that's not this, right? That's a separate thing?
No, I, I mean, it is, but it isn't. It's at the discretion to sell in general. But I don't think we're highlighting, hey, if we give you the authority to sell something, that you can't sell homemade cookies. I don't think we're getting to that level. Do you have any thoughts, Mike?
Were they gonna go to a, a public park and set up a shop, a lemonade stand kind of deal or?
Actually, I think they.
On their front doorstep or what?
They did it like on a corner in their, you know, on somebody's property.
Yeah, that, that would have nothing to do with what we're talking about here.
Yeah.
We're talking about bringing, selling, selling those kinds of things on public property.
And what it is, is a separate ordinance.
Right. And I draw a huge distinction between profit-making businesses, i.e. the ice cream guy that does that for a living, using public property to, to make a profit versus a 501(c)(3) trying to earn money to send kids on a special trip of some sort.
And then the same thing goes to P, just for your clarification. That's where we've had people, let's, let's just say the, the local semi-pro tennis player who holds their lessons up at the lighted tennis courts, just goes up, says meet me here and there. I mean, that town needs to be informed and, and part of any and all of those arrangements. And that's what that P is about, because that happens on a regular basis. Same with the batting cages and baseball lessons. A little bit difficult to enforce at times, but here in the ordinance, if we know what happens, then we have the option to get out there and, and discuss that with the potential people.
In P, it says, except when operated or sponsored by the town. Do you, if you have somebody out there that's teaching tennis.
Right.
That's not operated by the town.
Now, we did do one before. We did do a tennis camp in the past that was set up and done by the town.
Okay. But what I'm getting at is, do you want to say operated, approved, or sponsored? Because you could approve, somebody could come and say, I'd like to do this, and it could be approved.
Well, that's what we're talking about, right?
Yeah. But the way this is written, it has to be operated or sponsored by the town. Like, if it's approved, is it sponsored?
It's sponsored, approved, or do we want to clean that up?
Leave that one to the attorney.
We can add approved.
Okay. Thank you, Tricia. Okay. Does anybody have any heartburn about the golf? Q, I mean, I think that's pretty common sense. You don't want to get hit, golf balls flying around, et cetera.
That one would help us, would help.
It happens though. People go out there and especially at Harmony and drop their wedge and start hitting wedges. And can't, we need to enforce that. So. To bring, carry, or transport a glass container, any, any concerns there, I'm sure. Possessed alcoholic beverages, I think that's pretty self-explanatory. I'm paying, I'm on T.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can't you have alcoholic beverages with TCP?
Yeah, but this is.
This is not TCP.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're, I think, we're, I think, I think, Councilmember Mayor, we're gonna pull that TCP. We're gonna clean that up. One way or the other, we're gonna clean that up.
Okay, on the golf piece, do we not have anywhere any option for somebody to pick golf balls?
Not really. I mean, could Trophy Club, country club on the?
Yeah, but you have to be a member of the.
I completely understand, but not here in the town. I mean, I don't think that's, I think that's pretty common, Madam Mayor. I mean, when you look at the town ordinances and stuff, I mean, because the damage that a wedge does to your grass and your turf is just irreparable.
Not to say anything about the surrounding.
Yeah, so for the most part, that's kind of common. I mean, if you're, if you're not going to the country club, then you're going to, I don't know where the nearest, to be honest with you, it's been a little while, but I don't know where the nearest public. There's one in Colleyville off of twenty-six. Keller. Okay. Oh, yeah, that's right. There's one out, Keller Haslam. That's right. Okay. And then, of course, the gambling, it's pretty self-explanatory. T. Public address system, we have some issues in the past where a team comes to a ballgame and their big thing is to play their music loud in between the innings. And some of the music these days that some people will listen to, other people will consider very offended, especially if they know what they're actually saying. So we want to have that in there to clean up any music other than otherwise town-sponsored, I think, pretty. For any person six years old, restrooms, I mean, it's kind of mundane, but, you know, any young kids that need to go in with mom and dad, that's fine. But people using the opposite restroom because the women's is backed up and the men's is not, or vice versa, doesn't happen often, but we want to ordinance that. Yes, sir.
Can I go back to the sound system? Shouldn't you add those powered megaphones too?
Yeah, we certainly could.
Isn't that an amplified?
Public, amplified, yeah, amplified, but we could probably clarify it.
All right.
Bullhorn type thing.
But if we would be, you say, or device.
It says, or devices.
Or device, okay. Or device. Gotcha. So we're covered. Mm-hmm. Okay. If you say we're covered, Councilmember Rose, we're covered. I've learned that.
Patricia, you can just make sure we're covered on that.
I'm making notes on things to define as we go through.
Thank you, Patricia. Appreciate it. Any other questions, thoughts? V, W, loiter? I mean, that goes to the fugitive issue, the loitering in the parks, et cetera. I'll flip over to Freedom Dog Park, subset.
I have a quick question on E. When you say.
E.
For scheduled uses, like if somebody.
Where are you, please? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah.
On, on W sub E.
Oh, you're so, okay, you're, you're ahead of me a little bit.
Oh, am I ahead of you? Sorry.
Yeah, you're, yeah, you're well ahead of me.
Okay, go ahead then. Go ahead.
I have a W sub A.
Okay, yes, sir.
W sub A says, unless the use of the such facilities has been properly scheduled. Can you improperly schedule it? I'd scratch the word.
Okay. Yeah. I guess you can't improperly, but I see, I hear what you're saying. I guess the only improperly would be you spoke to the baseball association and knew the field was empty, but you didn't talk, speak to the town staff.
Scheduled with the town.
Scheduled with the town. Okay, thank you. Freedom Park, B. Hours of operation. I mean, there's no lights out there, so it's pretty self-explanatory. You can get there a little early in the dark while the sun's coming up, and you can stay a little bit till the sun's gone down. Independence East facilities may remain open till ten thirty. It's a C, so I think this is where we'll have some good discussion. Town Manager Sly, Madam Mayor, I'll let you kind of lead the discussion. And I will be happy to comment and give your feedback from the Parks Board perspective.
If you don't mind, Mayor, I just wanted to address what Councilmember Mayor was talking about, with the hard and fast timeframes. We really do, are making a concerted effort to get what little bit of revenue we can out of this park. And to, to invite teams from out of town to participate in this wonderful facility that we've constructed and pay good money to do so. For those lights to blink off with two outs and the last, and a man on third and the batter at the, at the plate doesn't appear to be, I think we've got to have some kind of latitude in there that says.
The point I was making, Mike, if you say the lights go off at ten thirty or eleven, and they can be extended until eleven thirty. Now, they, so at eleven o'clock, the Parks Director, somebody calls him or however they contact him, and they say, we want to extend it till eleven thirty.
Right.
And then it gets to eleven thirty and they're not quite finished.
No, I think.
So at which point, the, I'm, I'm just saying, at some point in, in this, whatever ordinance that we come up with, there has to be a time where the lights go off.
Absolutely agree. And, and that would be, I mean, at that point, if, if, if that latitude was authorized, you guys now have till eleven thirty and the lights are going off, now they know they've got thirty minutes to get this deal done. And, and if it's, and if it's two outs and the man at the plate and it's eleven thirty, you know.
Let me play devil's advocate just for a moment. I believe that reasonable people, if, if, if these baseball gentlemen know in advance that at X o'clock, the lights are gonna go out. We can start the game earlier so they have plenty of time or something. But I believe reasonable people can come to a reasonable time where we don't have to have any discretion about having to extend hours.
Well, I've been, I've been, my kids have played a lot of baseball in the past, and sometimes you can't totally control. However, I have a different question if I might, just for a second. How many tournaments do we have in a year?
Let's see. We have currently scheduled right now.
About.
We have four, five, six, seven, eight, nine max, nine max. And that would be potentially two in the fall and seven between Feb, the end of February and the middle of July.
Because one of the thoughts that went through my head.
That's max.
Because in a normal schedule, I agree with you, you should be able to schedule your games.
And we can. We can. During the recreational league schedule,
Right.
those times can be really solid.
And what I'm thinking is that we.
Okay, now, hold that thought. Remember you said.
I got you. No, I got it. Trust me. I can assure you that.
What I'm thinking, and, and I'm thinking this where I'd make the times a little earlier, but these times with the latitude would be for tournaments only. And allow and make, like, for instance, we say they can be open until ten thirty from Sunday. So let's make them ten o'clock, except in the case of a tournament.
Right. Now, can I address that?
Yeah.
So my, what, what the situation we run into is the, the, this is my knowledge. And, and I know this is a workshop, so I can't really pull on anything beyond this. So I'm gonna give you my experience, and things could have changed or what, I'll kind of tell you the challenge. The community is growing very rapidly. We start the games, not we, I used to be the president, now I'm the chairman of the Parks Board. The, the league starts at six PM or six thirty. Most times it's six thirty. Average game takes an hour and a half. So now you're, you got one game from six thirty to eight, and you have another game from eight to nine thirty. Those are the recreational league times. What tends to happen on occasion, not normally, but what happens on occasion, let me back up for a second. You've got games, depending on the age group, that run an hour and twenty, all the way to an hour and fifty. The twelve-year-old games go an hour and fifty, all the way to fourteen, go an hour and fifty. Then they go down to hour and forty, then hour and thirty, and all the way to hour and twenty. So each age group has a different range. So hence it affects the potential for that issue on each field. So if you're dealing with the fourteen-year-olds, you've got hour and fifty games and you have.
Why do you dealing with fourteen-year-olds on these fields?
That's Indy Four is where the fourteen-year-olds would be. I'm thinking the whole complex. So Indy Four is where the fourteen-year-olds, the twelve, eleven and twelve-year-olds, which play hour and forty, would be over on Indy Seven. So as you come around, if you think about that, Indy Five is the younger kids, should not be a problem on that field nearest to the homes. You've got plenty of flexibility built in with the, even at ten PM. But when you start running around to the older age groups and you're looking at longer game periods, well, then you run into one little issue of a kid who hurts himself, you know, the umpires are late, get extra innings. You would run into problems. There's no doubt about it. Getting two games in a night, which is vital within our community to be able to get this league done.
Good explanation. You're helping me out here. So you're saying what we need to do then is set hours by fields?
We could. You could get to that level.
Well, you have.
Within, 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 let me, let me caveat there to the mayor's point, with outside the tournament world. Because the tournament world's a different world, but within the recreational league, we could certainly say that field number five, which is the closest to the homes on Indy West, could have a different firm time than some of the other fields. You could certainly do that, Councilmember Mayor.
And outside that, well, you wouldn't be having those kind of tournaments on that particular, do you have tournaments?
Oh, yeah. That U eight age group is crazy. It's the most teams, as a matter of fact.
So you're talking nine tournaments, so you're talking about nine weekends at max, right?
Yes, sir. Per, per year.
Nine weekends per year. Can we define those weekends in?
Pretty closely, I mean, within reason.
I mean, not in the ordinance, but if, if the council went that way, could you define the nine weekends that we know that, that these hours would apply, these nine weekends before the season starts, so everybody would know and we would be looking at?
I would.
Or if you couldn't define the dates, limit them to nine. You can only have nine. I mean, if that's where you want to go.
The thing about the defined dates is we're at the mercy of outside organizations to call us and rent the fields. So we have these windows of opportunity, usually middle of May through the middle of July. And then you have a couple other weekend opportunities before the spring season starts, before our recreational league takes over.
Sorry, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I am, I mean, because I think we want to have, we want to have a really good, we want to get good utilization of the field.
Yes.
We want to give the baseball leagues the best product available.
Yes.
And at the same time, we want to protect the homeowners because they have investments and they have the quality of life that. and they have the quality of life that they need to get. So somewhere in there, there's a balance.
I agree with you.
And it's our job to get that balance where we don't overburden anybody.
Well, I mean, the only thing I would.
But, and that we do turn the lights out when we say we're going to turn the lights out.
And I agree, Councilmember Mayor. The only thing I would add is that, you know, that original field on U7, U8 was supposed to be competition level four lighting. We changed it to level two, which we could do for younger kids to handle the concerns of the citizens. If you look along that, there's a 130-foot section that exceeds one candle foot of lighting in the backyard of those homes. Certain of those homes are very minimal impact on the candle foot because of design and the way those lights are set up, okay? With the, we spent $10,000 additional of Parks Bond money along that fence to begin the screening process to adapt that. I can assure you, we have heard the citizens and done a lot of things as a Parks Board and as a town staff to address those concerns. And I am more than willing, from a tournament perspective, as a Parks Board Chairman, to try to find some more common ground. But we have a rapidly growing community, we have a lot of children, over 600 now, that are looking for these, to use these facilities. And if we can't do two games a night during the weekend, if part of, during the week as part of our recreational league, we will have a problem and not be utilizing our facilities.
I'm, I'm, I'm with that, I just want to mitigate and, and work toward something that's acceptable and that we will adhere to.
Yes, I'm completely fine with that.
It's very important that we adhere to what we say we're going to.
I agree.
And some of the light problems, Larry, are not the field directly, but from the field across. There are some of those, unless we've been able to get them adjusted, it's really the ones on the other side that are causing a problem because of the way they're.
I understand, I mean, there's, there's ambient light, it's always going to be there. But I mean, when you look at photometric studies, and you know, we rely, as this town does, as this council does, on engineers and the experts in this area, you know, we're within ordinance. And when you look at all these other 18 communities, there are multiple instances of where they're blessed to have their facility away from everybody. And it's usually next to the dump or something, out in Lewisville. But there's others, in our community, because of the land that was accepted and the very limited space that was available as a result of the Highlands and the Pid, we have what we have, and we spent $4 million on that facility to meet the needs of our citizens, and it has to be utilized within reason to maximize the activities in that property, whether it be from returning investment on for some tournaments, which we can certainly work with, to taking care of the needs of everyday, you know, citizens that want to utilize that facility.
I think you can clarify that.
I think we can.
I think, and we come up with some good times, I think the citizens will be happy and I think the league will be happy, and that'll make life easier for.
Can I just generally ask the council, are you comfortable with the proposed times that are here? I haven't heard anybody comment about the existing times.
I would like to see the, during the week earlier, if it's not during a tournament. Now, the tournaments are usually the weekend, right?
The tournaments are generally Thursday night. Sometimes we'll go two games on Thursday night in the bigger tournaments, and then Friday, Saturday, Sunday. The biggest challenge to the citizens on the tournaments that I want to be very upfront with is that Sunday night, those are mandatory single elimination games, and they are packed because you want to maximize eight games a day on the fields, which means you're going to have eight teams per field per tournament. So with the fields that are available over there, without using the Byron Nelson practice field, which they have actually, you know, given us to utilize in the past, seven fields maximize, maximum 56 teams. So maximizing the opportunity there for the revenue is to have eight games and max them out. Now, what happens is that championship game on Sunday is at 8:00, but you've played six games on those fields during that day. So a little run over here, a little run over there. There was an incident last, in this last summer, I'm aware of two incidents that have occurred. There was an incident this summer when they had an injury, they had an umpire get sick on the same field, and the lights were on at 11:30. And what was happening is, was tournament, the trophies were being handed out to the championship team who won the tournament, and parents are out there taking pictures and everything at 11:30, 11:45 at night. We even, I addressed that with Adam, we talked about that, and in the future, if we've got tournament trophies to hand out, move over to the concession stand and turn the lights out ASAP, and hand them out underneath the concession stand, which is lit with security lighting. But that was just an example of an incident that can happen in the tournaments and where the flexibility by this council would be much appreciated under those circumstances.
Can we, in, in the interest of, we have some other items, I think, to talk about here, but can we look at this again and see whether we can't bring in the time? See if we can't come with a better compromise of, that's my feeling anyway. If we can bring down the time, except for tournaments, and make it slightly earlier, if it can work.
Yeah, I think we can, I mean, even if we, if we get to a point, Mayor White, where, the other thing that you notice, I don't know if you noticed in the fine print here, is we designate Indy East and Indy West a little bit different. And the reason is, we know that Indy West does not impact, have a direct impact on the homeowners. And in the years of that field, we've never had any complaints, except been the old lighting system when somebody left the lights on all night. But the new lighting system, that didn't happen anymore. So I think that, you know, there's definitely a compromise there as well. If we really need the opportunity to play, to have, be a little later on that field, the league, et cetera, can schedule accordingly if that's necessary to mitigate the impact on.
I think that Mayor Sly's recommendation that we limit it to nine tournaments a year is a good.
Well, I mean, as I, as I say that, I mean.
Yeah, we.
I'm also getting nipped at the heels about generating revenue.
And let me highlight one other thing, there are tournament opportunities for our community where they would go all week during the summer, you know, a Tuesday through Saturday, and there'd be non-stop play and it would generate a significant amount of revenue. We were scheduled for one last year, it kind of fell through, but there's a potential for that. I just want to highlight that.
Then that nine doesn't mean anything, that you told me earlier?
No, that's one tournament, it just runs for five days instead of the traditional three.
One of the other things that I think is an issue, because I've driven down there a lot of times late, and I don't know how best to say, because I really appreciate our staff being conscientious about it, but I've seen them dressing those fields at 11 o'clock at night. And, you know, I think that maybe we could do that in the morning. I know, it's a problem, I understand.
That does result.
If you got the tournament, you've got to have the field ready for the morning.
I mean, that's a decision on staffing of, while they're there maintaining the integrity of the fields and cleaning and wrapping up, do they want to stay late or come back first thing in the morning? Or you've got seven fields, now you need more people in the morning versus the same crew in the night and the evening, because they can get half of them done at night and half of them done the following morning, so it's just a manpower issue.
We'll review that process.
Okay.
I just have one question, may I ask about Harmony? What are, why would the lights be on at 11 o'clock at Harmony Park? What would they be doing?
You know, the soccer is played out there.
At 11 o'clock?
It's getting late, later and later. Again, we're experiencing phenomenal growth, Councilmember Tiffany, and their soccer game usually was wrapped up at 8:00. But now that we have the new lights out there, I think he's just kind of covering himself for, or we're thinking of.
They're not doing that currently?
No, not currently.
But as this region continues to explode, I mean, there's only limited facilities.
Yeah. I think we're, are we wrapped up on time to where you have to move?
Yeah, we're getting pretty close. But we should finish, we should go through the.
Okay.
I did have one, are we finished on that page, everyone?
Page 9, 96, yes.
Okay. I had a question on C on page 10.
I have one on A.
Okay, go ahead.
Page 10, mine are not numbered.
Yes.
Eight.
Where am I at?
Yeah, I have one on that too.
1-10-3.
Okay, vehicular regulations.
Would you clarify for me?
15 miles an hour?
Yeah, 15 miles an hour, how does that affect Parkview as it comes, because it's within that park? What's the, are we saying that the speed limit on Parkview is 15 miles per hour?
No.
No, I think we're talking parking lots, are we?
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My, my question, my question specifically on A and B, aren't these items that should be in a public safety ordinance as opposed to a park ordinance? Aren't they, aren't they misplaced? I mean, I, I concur with what they say, but it seems to me that it should be a general.
It certainly didn't hurt to have a.
Could be in both places.
Yeah, does it hurt to duplicate them? I guess would be my.
If you duplicate them, you run the possibility later on of creating an unintentional conflict.
Okay.
So my thought is if, is that they should be in a public safety.
We'll check that with the league.
All right.
I have a real problem with C, as I get older.
Yeah.
And I'm about to get my Rascal. How am I going to ride my Rascal or motorized wheelchair handicapped people under this? They can't, they can't, they can't go.
Also those little scooters the kids have.
Yeah, I think you're, that's duly noted, and I think we need to allow for any handicapped access or, you know, access for, for.
Cars.
You know, carts or whatever, so I'm going to, whatever you want to call those.
What about golf carts?
Little scooters.
And golf carts.
I think when he's thinking scooter, the scooter tradition is those little kids on the two wheels.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about Rascal.
You're talking about, I know what you're talking about, Councilmember.
Trying to sell me one now that I'm 65, they could come out and call it off.
I know. Medicare at its best, right there.
Okay, but, but let me tell you, on the, like for instance, those little electric scooters, the kids ride them to school all the time. I mean, are we really saying we can't do those?
Well, I think, I think the issue within the park, Madam Mayor, is if you run into some other little kid on that scooter, that's the problem. You know, because when you have these, when you have all the kids, I mean, we all know, we're out there at a baseball event, the fields are full, and it's not just little brother or sister playing on the baseball field, it's the three and four-year-old that are running around that mom or dad, usually mom, are trying to keep track of. So I think we're trying to limit, within discretion, any type motorized vehicle, you know, running into a toddler that's enjoying the park.
I'm thinking about that new sidewalk that we're putting in behind LDS church that comes across to the school.
Yeah, I think golf carts are probably going to want to go along there.
We need to look at that.
Okay, we can certainly look at it, I mean, and I, and I, you know, you know, the, the access from a standpoint of the scooter you mentioned, Councilmember Mayor, I think that's very relevant, I seriously do. I mean, I've, we've had, you know, grandmas and grandpas that have come to watch tournament baseball games that are on those vehicles, so I, I think that's a very good catch that we should acknowledge.
Adam, E?
Well, you can, you can adopt that by either a speed limit on them or by, by need.
Okay.
And.
Assisted.
To go do that, yeah.
All right.
Adam, E on that section?
Mm-hmm.
I don't believe you can check with the chief or you can check with the attorney, but unless we erect signs about towing, we can't tow vehicles. You're required by law to have a sign and who's going to pick it up and where it's going to be.
And I had that discussion with Adam when he was talking about this part of the ordinance, he's aware of that.
Okay.
Okay. I, and here again, in those sections, I think we need to see if that doesn't also tie into a public safety ordinance and would be there rather than here.
No problem. I think, you know, the spirit of what we're trying to do, whether it's duplicated or not, is to make sure that the police and our PD have access to dealing with any and all issues, you know, within the parks, and that people are informed and educated as to the rules thereof when they attend and event in these parks. So I think there's definitely going to be some gray area, as Town Manager Sly mentioned, that we need to clean up.
Okay, on section 10, 10, 5, A, that, there's a typo in there.
Yeah, not, right?
Yes.
Person shall not ride, yeah, correct. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I caught that one, that was the one I caught a little while back.
I have a question, why, why, under exemptions, why are town and mud vehicles exempted from all of these rules?
We have, we have work gators and mules that we run up and down the linear park with as an example and things like that.
And their trucks, you know, access the parks to.
And that particular one, by the way, 10, 10, 5, it's, it's head, it's headlined. Prohibited acts.
Right.
But then it says the use of roller skates, roller blades, inline skates is permitted.
Yeah.
Oh, it's under prohibited acts, but now it's saying it's permitted. And then the second sentence is where the not should be, but I wonder why the whole thing is under prohibited acts. So could you look at that?
Well, let's clean that up, yeah.
I should use two different ordinances there.
Yeah, I think we, I think we got a little.
Cutting pace.
Okay, I think we got late in the document and started hallucinating a little bit there. We'll clean that up.
And on G, I don't, why, what's the deal with the food for training?
Where, where we at?
Have we done 10, 5?
Why, why are we on last?
Where are we?
We're, we're in section, section 1-10-5, use of tobacco products.
Okay, that's where.
I have a comment here, and I have to read it again, but I've got proliferation of no smoking signs. Oh, I see, facility where signs prohibiting such conduct are posted.
Okay.
This, this town does not have a smoking ordinance, period.
So they can.
For municipal buildings or anything like that. And we've chosen not to have a smoking ordinance so that we wouldn't have to cross that threshold. Generally speaking, there are communities that have made their communities no smoking, for all intents and purposes, all public places. You know, when I, when I go out to the baseball field, you know, there's, there's a lot of, I call them dads, who, you know, do this kind of thing and chewing tobacco and, and, I mean, that's what they did, that's what they do. I don't know how you feel about it, it's going to be hard to enforce, I'll tell you that right now.
I hate the thought of cigarette butts.
Where, where Adam is really kind of honing in on, and we were as a Parks Board, is to your point, Town Manager Sly, that's a unique situation there. I think he's more focused and we were on the pool. The pool area inside the Splash Park, et cetera, is an area very enclosed where you probably, if you can do something, you probably want to do that very firm in that area.
Right.
But outside of that.
Don't you just draft it for that area and try to, I'm just trying to figure out.
That, no.
You have to put a sign everywhere.
Yeah.
We can do that.
Anyway, that's why, that's why we want to bring that, you know, that's why we're.
Well, this is basically saying unless, that you can, if you put, if you decide to put a sign in an area, there is no smoking there, that's all it's saying. So unless we specifically.
I would just specifically work on the area that I don't want anybody smoking and.
Right, and that's kind of what it gives us the flexibility to do. So basically, the perspective of the Parks Board is that if there's a problem and it becomes to our attention, then the sign goes up, the ordinance is already here.
Right.
So boom, stake the sign, no more smoking here, we've had multiple complaints, sign goes up, we don't have to come back to this council and say, hey, we need a new smoking ordinance here in the parks and wrecks.
Yeah, and see, that makes sense to me, because.
Trying to think ahead on occasion, trying to.
Any one place, you're going to have to have a sign there.
Yeah.
Because.
Yes, sir.
Otherwise, people won't know.
Well, but it's like the town manager said, we don't have a no smoking ordinance, so wouldn't it be better to just pass a citywide smoking ordinance that said that same thing? And that way we can put a no smoking sign on the front door.
Well, it might, but we're here now.
I think, I think that's a whole nother issue, I'll let you guys handle.
10, 10 points, 10-6, peanuts and sunflower seeds? The paragraph below it addresses more than that, so we need to adjust the title.
Okay.
Because it says nuts of any variety.
Okay.
Peanuts.
Yeah.
Shell nuts, walnuts.
The shells of these.
I, I understand.
Yeah.
But I would.
I had the same note, and then it says that they can sell them during a tournament, so I'm figuring out.
Yes.
What's the difference?
Well, I, I can help you with that, so.
Well, I'm glad.
During the tournaments, people are going to bring their stuff in, and to Town Manager Sly's point, if somebody's giving up tobacco so they can have some sunflower seeds, I don't want to take that necessarily away from them, plus you've got all these outside citizens coming to the tournament. Restricting those types of things during the tournament could be a big problem to enforce, and it would kind of give us a bad name amongst the tournament community of where to go play in a tournament. So because those fields are rented and they're paying for them, then it's maybe worth it for the town staff to go through and clean up the seeds. However, during our rec league, when our community is paying for that bill and those peanuts are everywhere, you know, the baseball association is compromised with, with Adam in saying, hey, you know what, we won't sell them at the concessions because we understand it's kind of a little bit of a maintenance nightmare on the drains, it's kind of a little bit of a maintenance nightmare on the drains, but during tournaments, really probably need to have that available and we're paying for it.
Larry, do you remember what you just said? You don't want to get a bad name with the outside people, but it's okay to get a bad name with the.
No, but, but, it's kind of funny you say that. We're willing to compromise to not sell them. I will promise you, Councilmember Mayor, we will not throw anybody out of the parks to have sunflower seeds, but the, the baseball association has agreed due to some maintenance issues that let's just go ahead and not sell them and not have them except during tournaments when it'd be very difficult to, to manage.
Yeah, really.
I thought it was a pretty nice compromise because it's a nice little revenue stream, but, I mean, we understand Adam and Tony's frustrations with peanut shells and sunflower seeds. Plus you've got peanut.
Just a general question, but isn't this the problem only in the dugouts?
You know, actually what happens is, they blow them all out, and if you look at the drains, the way the fields were designed, uh, Councilmember Strutter, there's a, the drainage are along the edge and they clog up all the drains. So it becomes a problem even in the dugouts and, and the areas where the parents, I mean, I've seen a dad go through a whole bag of peanuts right there in the stands and it's all laying on the ground, and then when they're all blown, the wind gets going, they all get up against the nets and they get into the drains and it becomes a big problem. So we're trying to, again, compromise, but knowing that in the world we live in, find the compromise. To Councilmember Mayor's point on the lights, we'll be working with that as well. Yes, sir.
If they're ready, ten point seven, ten dash seven, need a definition of an adult.
Of an adult?
Says, under the direct supervision of an adult.
Is it not twelve years?
Yeah, it's section A, uh, section A there, direct supervision of adult, you need to, and then, and this may be an attorney.
Oh, okay.
Add, I'm not sure. The very last sentence talks about it shall be a violation for a person to permit. Uh, I don't know if that's redundant or not. Because you've got requirements that says the dog shall display a current rabies tag and, and vaccination and.
Did you double that up, Patricia, again, reinforce the point?
Ten dash seven B, last sentence.
Shall be a violation for a person to allow or permit a dog to utilize or be located within the park if the animal does not meet the foregoing requirements.
It should be the in colon.
Yeah, I think, I think it's redundant from the first sentence. Shall be, shall be and shall display.
I'll work on that on the, on the final draft.
Well, there's a difference between that they can be there, you can throw them out or it's a violation.
Right.
Well, yeah.
Can I ask a question, Larry?
Yes, sir.
C, dogs belonging to Trophy Club residents shall display a registration tag issued by the town. What is that?
You know what, that is a program that Adam put in place, uh, for Trophy Club residents, and I, you have to forgive me, uh, Councilmember Mayor, because I'm trying to remember, I believe, is it, is it a free service?
No.
No.
Is it, how much is it? Is it five dollars? Yeah, it's a, it's a five dollar fee.
Let the police chief.
Yeah. Thank you.
We're talking about registering pets here in town. What are the pet requirements for registration?
Pet requirements to register in Trophy Club, the resident Trophy Club have rabies vaccination application.
Twenty-five dollars, yeah.
We keep that database at the police department. We went all over the, you know, and it's very hard to enforce as well, but, uh.
You gotta make kidding.
No.
Register a dog with the town?
Yes, we do.
And yours is registered, too.
And the only way you can get it registered is to show proof of, proof of vaccination.
That's a dumb law.
It's a very common law.
Your dog's not registered.
Yeah.
Wait a minute. How many dogs do you have registered in the town right now?
What?
I guarantee you, there's not a person that lives in the Highlands knows that such a law even exists.
I believe it's, I believe it is in the package, the info package that's handed out.
I promise you it's not.
It's not?
Well, no, I was, I was commenting to his other, that nobody in the Highlands knew.
You're not to register, right?
If their, if their animal was picked up unregistered, we remind them. You remind me? We reminded them if they, if it was picked up that it was not registered.
Has to have a dog.
There's, there's a couple of reasons for that, actually. I mean, we want to make sure that they're vaccinated, current vaccinations, and it also gives us a database if we happen to pick it up, if it gets, if your pet gets lost or whatever and gets turned into animal control.
I'm wrong.
Well.
Yeah, sorry. Okay, let's stay on topic.
Danny, 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 welcome to council.
That's just dumb.
Okay. That's a rule we can tackle another time.
Anybody have any other concerns about that?
I do on G, I don't understand that one.
Same, same question.
Yeah.
So is treats to train a dog.
You have a training section, by the way.
I, in the training area, correct. So the reason that is, is when you introduce food or dog treats for one dog, it will ma, it can affect the behavior of the other dogs in the facility. So the recommendation from people who know a lot more about dogs than Adam and I do is that you don't bring jog or training treats into the general public, except when you were doing a training class, because other dogs have a nice sense of smell and they will come looking for a treat themselves and then you get a big dog fight. So that's why that's in place there.
So, but you can't even do it when you're doing a class?
Well, that might be an area where we might need to add a Parks and Recreation Director discretion to make it, what, fourteen? Do we need to make it fourteen right there?
No, it's there.
It is? Oh, there it is, yes, authorized by the director, special event, so we're good.
Okay.
We're still at thirteen.
Who enforces, uh, the, um, dogs being registered when they're at the dog park?
You know.
I mean, who goes out there and checks dogs? That's the question.
I don't think anybody's doing it.
The police department.
Actively, but.
Animal control.
I can answer that nobody because my dogs are down there all the time, they're not registered.
It isn't, the registered part is, it's the vac, there's two things, you have your registration, but there's a tag you get from the vet that says the dog has.
Of course, we have that, I have that.
Is what they're really looking for.
I know, but you have to have it with you.
Generally, it's animal control that's enforcing that.
And.
At the dog park I'm talking about.
I don't think mine's registered either.
Yes.
Great.
Keeps everybody safe.
Awesome. Any other thoughts or comments? You guys have all given me a great amount of feedback, which I appreciate, I didn't have any less of an expectation. And, um, I'll work with Adam and staff and with Patricia and, uh, Town Manager Sly to clean all this up, and, uh, we'll be back. It'll come back, my understanding is back to the Parks Board. Uh, I'm sure we can have some discussions with staff around the lighting and work with other parties, interested parties, and then we'll come back before the Parks Board and then back to you again, uh, in the meantime.
Um, I have, uh, there were people, I believe, has anybody signed up that wanted?
Citizen presentations.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just telling, letting you guys know, you know, so there were people who wanted to speak on this.
Yes.
And since this is a workshop, we didn't, but they will during citizen presentation. We can't respond at that time because of the thing, but I wanted to make sure you were still here.
Yes, I will be happy to stick around for citizens' presentations, it'd be my pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much for your time tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to take a break just for a couple of minutes and then we'll get our meeting, our regular meeting started.
Thanks for stepping up, Larry.
It is, uh, seven twenty-seven on February, on, um, February fourth, and we will call the meeting into regular session. Um, the invocation will be offered by, uh, financial manager?
Director.
Director, right. Michael, uh, Gilera. The pledges will be led by P I O Marketing Manager, April Riling. If you'll please rise.
Our Father in Heaven, we, uh, come before thee this evening. We ask that you please, um, look over this meeting, um, this evening. We're very thankful for all those who came out to participate in, um, the government of, of this community. We're very grateful to all the volunteers that help us on a, uh, week-to-week basis, and we ask you please bless them and their families for the time that they spend, uh, to give back to their community. Very thankful for the elected body who give of their time. We ask that you please, um, watch over their families while they're away, and we also ask that you please watch over those who serve our community to keep it safe and to keep our country safe. We ask that you, um, continue to bless the leaders in this community with guidance and with inspiration that, um, opinions may be given with respect and that we would remember the purpose of our being here. And we say these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible. Glenn's not here either.
Oh, that's right.
Okay.
Glenn's not here to do the cheer.
Okay, um, I neglected to mention, we had two other agenda, agenda items in the workshop, but we are, um, skipping them, it's just a matter of, um, time and not something we need to be dealing with right now. So, um, we will move into citizen presentations and, and it's an opportunity to address the council on any matter whether or not it's posted on the agenda. And as I explained before, the, um, the lights are not on our regular agenda or the baseball, the park ordinance, park ordinance. So we will certainly hear your comments, but we are limited into what we, what we can say in response. I just wanted to explain that beforehand. Also, um, I would request, it's, it's up to you, everyone has their three minutes, but I'd request, if we have multiple people, that if you can either, you know, agree with what the person said and go on to something different. In other words, let's make the best use of the time if we can, so we're not repeating the same thing, because we have a lot of other business to go through, so, um, but again, you're, you have your three minutes to say whatever you'd like. Okay, um, and I'm assuming all of the people who are in, uh, speaking on citizens is, are not addressing items that are on the, later on the agenda, right?
Right.
Okay, all right, Chuck Hall. And you do understand it's three minutes and the chief is timing that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Town Council, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you again. Uh, my name is Chuck Hall. I live at nineteen Lakeview Drive and Trophy Club. I've been a resident here for fourteen years. I'm currently serving as President of the Trophy Club Rono, uh, Baseball Association, and, uh, obviously, lights, um, and our facilities are very, very top of mind to me. I just want to make a couple of comments. I think the, uh, the dialogue that we've had tonight, the openness, the questions, the feedback, et cetera, I think are all pointing, uh, in the right direction in terms of our ability to support, uh, league events, tournaments and these types of things. And let me also say, and I mean this, uh, from the bottom of my hearts, um, we want to be a conscientious and a very supportive neighbor, uh, to our, our friends, um, and and associated residents that join, um, that park. We're very sensitive to their, uh, concerns and thoughts, uh, we want to work to a compromise, uh, and hopefully kind of meet in between where we're not only able to serve our community, and it's over six hundred kids now, um, hundreds of households, hundreds of households, uh, the majority of which are, uh, from Trophy Club, uh, but we also want to be able to recognize the concerns and thoughts of our friends and neighbors that adjoin that park. So ultimately, my goal is to, uh, come away with something that is agreeable, understanding that flexibility, um, is, is important, um, flexibility with tournaments especially. Let me just make one other last comment, uh, because I think this is important. Policing ourselves, um, I can't tell you how many times I've driven the neighborhood because I got nothing better to do and I love baseball, I love our organization, uh, and I've driven around and I've seen Indy three or Indy four, Indy one or Indy two, uh, when there's no one there, the lights are on, I call Musco, we shut it down. I do that for two reasons, and I'm not the only one. Uh, number one is to, um, help alleviate light concerns from our neighbors, uh, and number two is to save the town some money. That is our way of helping to contribute to the overall, uh, product and support of, of what it is you all do for us. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Corey Woodard, Woodward.
Um, Chuck pretty much said it all, I'm on the baseball board as well, and I'm not going to reiterate what he said, but I do have three kids that play baseball. We live in North, uh, Northlake, so I'm not a resident, but I consider this my second home because I'm in Trophy Club with baseball all the time, my kids go to Medlin, uh, so this is my second home. Um, we do enjoy it and we do respect the citizens that, that surround the park, and I know for a fact that man over there has been there, uh, in the evenings, driving around and turning off the lights. I have as well, other board members, that's, that's been one of our big mantras this past season was, see what we can do to help, you know, help the situation, be respectful to our neighbors and, you know, save the, the town some money with, with electric costs. So we're doing definitely our part to, to make this a concerted effort to, um, ease the, the, the issue and come to an agreement that, that we can all, uh, get along with and, and appreciate. So, uh, it, it is a large base with six hundred kids, like, like Chuck said, and many families in the area that, uh, that support it, and, and Mayor, I know, uh, you mentioned it as well, that, that you've been through it as well. So just want to take this opportunity to, uh, say thank you for considering it and, uh, hearing everybody out.
Thank you. Rick Fernano, did I say that correctly?
Fernino.
Fernino.
Thank you all for having us here, appreciate your time, uh, with this. I'm with the baseball group as well, I'm a board member now in the third year, been playing in the league for seven years, I believe. Um, don't want to read it, what they've said a whole lot besides the fact that flexibility is the key here. Um, we need to get these tournaments in for the, for the revenue fact of it. Uh, I will give you a little bit different perspective on it, though. I'm from northern Fort Worth, we're part of the N I S D, so we play here. Um, we chose Trophy Club because of the facilities, because of the neighborhood, because of the people. We could have played in Keller, we could have played in Fossil Creek, we could have played in a lot of places. We chose Trophy Club because of your community, and that means a lot to us, and that's why we donate our time and our efforts towards it, but it's because of the facilities, it's because of the people of this community that we chose to play here. We appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. And Mike Fitzgerald?
Hi, Mike Fitzgerald, twenty-four, twenty-one, Lilyfield Drive, last time I checked. Um, been a while since I've been up here. Um, I, I'll spare most of the comments that I have with regard to the parks, uh, ordinance, uh, because it will take far in excess of, everyone's three minutes. So I will choose instead to put my comments in writing and address them, uh, directly to you. I do want to, uh, take a moment to just say thank you to the town and to the Parks Board, uh, for putting the time in and having this discussion rather than just throwing it up here and making a decision and moving on down the road. This works a lot better for me, I can tell you. Um, the other thing I want to talk about was, um, the, adding a, a council position. It, I don't know if that council position is to replace, uh, a, a council person or it's adding another council person. Um, whichever it is, I'd be curious to know if the town's considered districting for, for better representation. Uh, I'll just, I, I don't, I'm not asking for an answer, I just would like you to think about that.
Okay.
And finally, the only other thing I want to say is that it's not necessarily about the lights with the time, because I can, I, I put up blackout shade, blackout shades in my bedroom, so I can block out the light. I put up screens on all my back windows, so I can dim that light down, but I can't shut the noise off. That's a, that's, as long as the lights are on, there's, there's noise that goes with it, so I would like you to consider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Deb Durbin?
Uh, I'm Deb Durbin, I live at ten forty-two Wilshire Drive, nowhere near the parks, but I'm concerned because, um, you know, I've seen that there was an ordinance, um, But I'm concerned, because, you know, I've seen that there was an ordinance to, you know, that it was supposed to be a 40-foot buffer, and that didn't happen. And that concerns me as a citizen, resident of Trophy Club, because if that can be ignored, any other ordinance can be ignored. And I also believe that, I'm uncomfortable with the latitude, the proposed latitude, of allowing the Parks Director or Parks Manager to extend the games past 10:00 PM. 10:00 PM is our current noise ordinance, I believe. And extending it at the discretion of the Parks Manager or the Parks Director gives the residents that are adjacent to the ball fields no hope, really, because how do we know that it just won't happen? You know, I'm not saying it would, but it could. And I, my personal opinion is that 10:00 PM is late enough for young children to be playing baseball. 10:00 PM is plenty late enough, especially on a school night. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ursula Roberts.
Hi, my name is Ursula Roberts, and I live on 2419 Lilly Field. So, I am directly behind Indy East, and Trophy Club is my first home. We have three children that all are involved in lots of sports during the week. We play all weekend. I can tell you, being right behind the ball fields, that there's been a lot of discussion of, sometimes this happens, every once in a while, this happens. It happens a lot. This 10:00 PM ordinance is very rarely adhered to. That is our concern. So, if that goes later, that extends it again. That is our concern. For most of the people that live on that street, we either have school-aged children, or we work, which means you're getting up at 6 o'clock in the morning. So, what we're asking you is to at least give us our eight hours a night. Eight hours, 10 to 6:00 in the morning. That's all we're asking for. We moved there knowing what we were getting. Some people didn't, but I did. But I'm asking for the council to give me my eight hours. I should be able to go to bed at 10, get up at 6:00. There's a lot of nights I have to text Adam. There's a lot of nights we live with it. There's a lot of times I call Adam, and we do not get responses back. So, we've learned to live with it, so we're asking you to not extend that. And I know when you say nine tournaments a year, that seems really small. But a four-day tournament at 11:00 at night, that's a lot of my months, really. That's, it's a lot of time when you take into consideration, I have a daughter who's eight, is my youngest, and I'm asking you to give us our eight hours. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Julie Folly. And Julie, you had asked to, your husband has given you his time, so you have six minutes.
If I need it.
Okay. Did you hear that, Chief? Okay.
My name is Julie Folly. I live at 2407 Lilly Field Drive. So, I learned something new tonight, nine tournaments. When I think of nine tournaments, I think nine nights. Until I just learned tonight that if they can start on a Thursday through Sunday, that's one tournament. So, that would be nine weekends. That's a little concerning for me. I just came out, I wanted to just not get emotional. I just wanted to go with facts. When we moved here for planning and zoning, Chapter 13, Page 977, the things that we looked at when we were going to buy a home, the lights were not going to exceed 25 feet. The light should be pointed directly towards the ground and be shielded. Alternative lights, however, could be approved by the Town Council. We did understand that. And the lighting shall be designed to reflect away from any adjacent residential areas. The problems that I have with that is that I have a light that shines directly at me. The light does not go down. Now, I don't blame all of that on the council. Not sure if my mic's working. What I, who I do blame that on are the engineers. I sat in this room that day, and I listened to the engineer say, "The higher that we put the lights, if we go to 70 feet, they will point down. They will not come towards our property." However, I had Adam Adams finally come to my backyard just this past year, not very long ago, as a matter of fact, and sit in my back patio, and he went ahead and he had all the lights put on. I think he was shocked. He sat there with the lights blinding in his eyes and acknowledged the fact that we have a problem, not so much the light meters, but the direction of the lights. So, as he left my house, his first thought was, "We'll see if we can get these tweaked. I will call you when they come out, and they will tweak the lights." I never heard from him, but I just so happened to come home one night and found out from one of my neighbors that he was out there tweaking the lights. With somebody, I mean, obviously, the lighting. However, I never even got a call. So, there was no way they could try to tweak the lights away from my home, so nothing has changed. I also want you to know that just last week, after asking for months of the security lights going on, that the security lights also point straight out to my light, my house. There's nothing that I can do about the security lights. Finally, Adam last week called me out of, and I wasn't even calling him, to let me know that he had met with the police department, and that for security reasons, they felt that they could take those lights and they could tweak them down. They were going to be doing that this week. I have yet to see anything be done. So, we live with that, because it goes straight into our bedroom. So, the other thing that I just want to bring up is, when they applied for a variance, okay, there were certain criteria that needed to be met for the variance for those 70-foot lights. And of course, again, the engineers, I mean, that's what they sold you. They sold you a product. Well, the product now is there. That's their fault. Now, I need this council to protect my home and my family. So, that's your job, is now that that is there, to make it right, please. So, some of the things that were there when those lights went up, there were four criteria that needed to be met. I'm just going to read the most important one that I feel, "Is the granting of the waiver will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or interest to other properties in the area." That was part of that variance granted for these lights to go up. Honestly, I don't care if they play baseball, but I can tell you that it is very noisy back there. And the worst field for me are the lights that are farthest away, because all of those lights point straight at my home. So, if the noise is there, I can almost live with that, better than I can the lights. But my neighbors can't, because their homes are closer. We all have a different direct problem. I have talked with Adam about maybe trying to incorporate some larger trees at the end of the parking lot, not on our buffer zone, at the end of the pool parking lot, because that is a direct line to some of those lights. I have yet to hear back from him. So, we have tried to come up with solutions. Again, I know that it's been, I'm going to repeat, the noise ordinance in our town is 10:00 PM. It's really difficult to go ahead and keep lights on for baseball. If at 10:30 and 11:00, we have to hear it, they can't. And I did bring that to Adam's attention, and he did just kind of balk that off. He didn't really say much about, he basically told us it wouldn't be an issue. But it is very much an issue. It is very noisy. And you know what? It's not really the kids' fault that it's noisy, because they want to cheer for their teams. But I feel that if we give the rules to the baseball association, that they have to have their last game with the amount of time to make sure that they have enough time, then the lights could respectfully be off at 10:00. I like baseball. I would actually, if I didn't have issues and so much stress, I'd probably walk over there and enjoy some of the games. And my children don't play. But right now, it is such a thorn in our side, because we can't live comfortably. I have no use of my backyard. I want a pool in my backyard. I cannot have a pool in my backyard. That is very frustrating. So, I would hope that, knowing that, I would say, I have not heard one Royal Troon neighbor ever dislike baseball. I think we all just want to live next to the parks, and we are just all looking for a resolution, so that we don't have the issues from the parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue Fitzgerald. You don't get your husband's three minutes. You already.
I'm Sue Fitzgerald. I live at 2421 Lilly Field Road. And, you know, we've talked about the lights. We've talked about the meters. There's a lot of issues here. Everyone in this room, and I know, you know, we have a light problem in our house. I mean, you cannot say that with the ball fields there, and we tried to deal with it. We bought shades. We planted, you know, we really tried to work with it. But there's definitely a light issue. We also have a drainage issue. We did the wait-and-see. It hasn't rained much. You know, I've informed, bless Adam's heart, he's not here to defend himself. I can't get him to either email, call, or text back. So, we, Mike and I have really talked about it. There's an easy solution that we think we can come up with. It really doesn't cost a lot of money. So, we, you know, it's official. We need to take care of our drainage problem. We also have a problem, Mayor White, you and I stood back there, we lose trees. We have a dead tree problem. And maybe because we have a dead tree problem, that compounds our light problem, because we have no buffer. So, you know, and Adam replaced two out of the three dead trees. We still have, for this will be, I think, our second season with this larger dead tree. I don't know. It was supposed to be under warranty, and then the bond, something, you know. It hasn't been taken care of. But bless his heart, the two dead trees that he replaced in the fall, they are now dead too. So, I don't know why this spot just continually, if it's the irrigation has been turned off, and it's not getting saturated. I don't know. You and I have stood back there, and you have, and I cannot figure it out. So, maybe if we can get the dead tree issue fixed, we wouldn't have such a problem with the lights. So, and I do appreciate, you know, I'm with Ursula. I just want eight hours. I just want eight hours apiece. And unfortunately, Ursula, she gets up at 6:00. I get up at 5:00. But 10:00 is a great time to say, "You know what? The residents of Trophy Club lights out. You know, the noise is gone. Let's, good night." And I'm usually in bed before 10:00. So, I do appreciate the opportunity of speaking, and I'm sure I will be communicating with you more.
Okay, thank you. Mike Buck.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mike Buck, and I'm also a resident of Royal Troon. My address is 2401 Lilly Field Drive. I'm also the president of another committee within Trophy Club, so I've addressed the Town Council a few times. And I'm also a coach, so I also coach a team who benefits from the parks and recreation in the fine city of Trophy Club as well, too. So, I kind of understand both sides of every story here. I guess what I'm asking for, and what I want the Town Council to consider, is a word, actually, two words, that have been used quite frequently tonight, and that is reasonable and flexible. I've heard a lot of people mention those two words, and that's what I'd like for you to think about. I think that the times that have been proposed, I think that there's probably a lot of room for movement and negotiation there to make those more reasonable times. Even if you throttled those times back by half an hour, and what's currently proposed right now, I think you'd have a lot of, I think you'd have a good, reasonable compromise with the citizens of Royal Troon and my neighbors as well, too. I actually am standing here more or less for solidarity reasons with some of my other neighbors that live on Lilly Field. I'm more affected, quite frankly, by Indy West. So, and I also built my house and knew full well that those baseball fields were built when I actually purchased my home and built my home. So, I knew exactly what I was getting into. However, when I see that we're looking at, you know, times and extending those times, that causes me great concern, because as a few people have said before already, it's not necessarily the lights that bother me, quite frankly. It's the noise. And so, when you have noise that comes in, that goes along with those nights, the cheering alone, parents, children, whatever the case may be, is, in some cases, when I'm staying in my backyard, which is right behind the pool, you guys can come and visit at any time. You know, I would have people actually see what I see. It can be somewhat deafening, quite frankly, during a tournament time. And if I do the math on my own here, if the tournament starts, or the final game of the tournament starts on a Sunday evening at 8:00, even two hours for the 14 U14s, you're looking at completing that game by 10:00 at the latest. And awards, ceremonies, handing out trophies, probably 10:30. I'm okay with that. But when you start creeping up until 11:30, I think that's when it becomes unreasonable. And so, those are my comments. My wife wanted me to mention one thing, and that's just that I think the Town Council also has to kind of look at the revenues. Does the revenues that these tournaments bring in, and having additional times, the ratio of the revenues versus the expenses, does that justify the mean? So, I think that's probably something that should be looked at as well, too, as we go forward. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate it, and those are my comments.
Thank you. That's, is that all, no one else has added? That's all the speakers I have for that item? Thank you very much. And as I said, we're kind of limited in our response at this point. We'll be talking about it. Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed as consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion.
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as submitted.
As corrected.
As corrected.
At the dais.
As corrected. At the dais.
Second.
You've got it. You've got it.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? We're good. That was easy. Okay. I know she was waiting to see. Yep. Okay. Now, moving on to the regular session. We have item number seven. Consider and take appropriate action regarding a replat of Lot 2R Block B to Lot 2R1 and 2R2 Block B of Trophy Wood Business Center. Applicant Highway 114 Prospect Limited, the property owner. And Carolyn, Director Huggins?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. This is a replat of a lot in Trophy Wood Business Center, which is located across the street from Value Place Hotel. We're down here in the lower right-hand corner, southeast corner of the town. And this is the lot that has Trophy Branch Drive to the east, Trophy Wood Drive to the west, and Plaza Drive to the north. So, the yellow, okay, I can't get this to work, the yellow lot there. The lot is 3.2 acres, and the property owner is subdividing it into two lots. One will contain 1.2 acres of land, and the other will contain two acres. The purpose of the replat is that the owner wishes to sell the east lot, the 1.2-acre lot. The plat does meet the town's subdivision rules and regulations and the requirements of PD 25, and staff does recommend approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with a unanimous vote when they considered this item on January 17th. The applicant is represented by David Lewis with Spry Surveyors, and he is here this evening if you have any questions for him.
Does anyone have any questions?
Mayor, I move to approve the replat of Lot 2R Block B to Lot 2R-1 and 2R-2 Block B Trophy Wood Business Center.
Second. Okay, the motion's been made by Councilman Rose, seconded by Councilman Tiffany. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay.
That's good.
Yes. All right. Item number eight. Consider and take appropriate action regarding a site plan for Lakeview Elementary School, 100 Village Trail, applicant RLK Engineering on behalf of Northwest ISD. Director Huggins?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Northwest ISD is expanding Lakeview Elementary School. They are planning to add about 32,000 square feet, which will be new classrooms in addition to the library and a new dining and kitchen area. Rob Morris, who's at the podium, he's with RLK Engineering, and Mike Elmore with SHW Group Architects have a presentation for you this evening that will go over the details of the expansion. The engineering construction plans have been reviewed and approved by the town engineer, including the drainage and detention pond that will be in the northeast corner of the property. And the reason you received such a large rolled set of plans, I'm sorry.
Several sets went to Austin.
Typically, you would just look at a site plan package, but because the detention pond is a new feature of this site, we wanted to give you the data regarding the drainage. So, some of you wanted to look at that. For some of you, it was important. So, we did include those details, so that you would have those available. The town engineer has reviewed and approved the construction plans, and there is a memo from Mr. Rutledge signing off on the construction plans, page 45 of your packet. The site plan meets the town's regulations regarding building height, the location and screening of the dumpster, the photo-metrics plan, the landscape plan, which does provide the required tree mitigation as required by the town's regulations. The irrigation and parking are in compliance. Staff and the town engineer do recommend approval, and the Planning and Zoning Commission heard this request on January 17th and by a unanimous vote, recommended approval. Thank you.
Good evening. Like I said, my name is Rob Morris with RLK Engineering. I'm going to give you an overview of what we're planning on doing with this project. Currently, this is, this is the site plan. I'm going to give you kind of back up here a little bit. This is currently how the school site is configured currently. We have a bus drop-off along the front.
Yes, I'm sorry. I took it away from you.
There's a bus drop-off along Village Trail. Currently, buses come in off of this middle drive here, drop off in the front and exit. There's a parent drop-off along the east side that kind of comes on the backside of the four-turn around. Parents exit back out. Right now, our current plan, and what we're going to be doing, is we're going to extend our front drop-off about 200 additional feet, line up with Sonora Drive. This will be for bus and visitor parking in the front. We're going to add additional parking along our east drive on this side. We're extending the parent drop-off along the back. There'll be turn-around, and then the new drop-off. the new drop-off will be in this location here. With, we'll also be having a additional fire loop drop-off in the back to provide additional fire coverage on the backside of the school. What this allows us to do is it'll give us a lot more queuing to get traffic off of Village Trail. This will get us roughly, kind of looping traffic back, it might get around depending on how they park or stack around fifty cars off of Village Trail onto the school property. Also in the front there, this, you know, we have, I think we added seventy-five lots here, and we have sixty-five lots here for a total of a hundred and forty lots, which is quite an increase of what we have currently. On the back, this is our detention pond, kind of ran off the room here, so we have it shown here. This will detain the additional impervious area runoff that we have with this project back to its existing conditions, and will not be impacting the downstream channel and downstream pond as to the northeast. This is, again, more, more collecting now.
I'm sorry, can you say what you just said again? I'm just, I just need to understand how that works, the detention pond, and how it doesn't impact anything beyond it? Because now that you have a lot more impervious surface, how it doesn't impact anything?
Currently, what we did, what we've done in the plans, we figure out how much impervious area we currently have. And we, through calculation, we can figure out how much we're actually letting go in a flow rate during a given storm. In this case, we look back at the hundred-year storm and say, we cannot increase the amount that's leaving the site currently with this amount of impervious area. Then we take our developed area, and we are collecting all the roof now and most of the parking areas, and it's draining to this detention pond. What we do at that point is we actually throttle back the amount that's actually leaving the pond with, in this case, we're using a weir. It actually restricts the flow actually leaving. So what that does, since more's coming in than leaving, it kind of creates a pond. It balloons up, and then you have to have more area to hold that water. And then as the waters recede in the channel, and as it recedes out of there, the pond will fill up, and then it will slowly release that area at a lower rate.
Okay, thank you.
One of the more important kind of safety improvements we're having to this site is we're adding a fire loop, a water loop that goes around the site now. Currently, there's a hydrant here and a hydrant here on the site. We're, this loop allows us to add hydrants along our fire lane around the back to give us better fire coverage. And also, again, with our fire loop in the back, we'll be providing additional coverage to the backside of the site we currently do not have. I'm here to entertain any other questions, if you'd like, on the site, but I'd also like to turn it over to Terry Hoyle here. He's a resident architect, to talk to you a little bit more about what we're doing internally to the, to the building.
Thank you.
Good evening. Let's go to the next one, because that's not going to show quite so well, I'm going to try to do this back on the plan before. The, what we were trying to do with the design is to provide the kind of facilities on this campus that the district is trying to provide at all their campuses, to upgrade each of their campuses around the district. And so, looking at adding both capacity, adding an improved aesthetic on the outside, and then kind of modern amenities to the dining and the indoor gym area. So just kind of showing you the area, this is the existing entrance here. So what we've done is we've relocated and constructed a new library, which comes from the center of the building out to the front, so it's more available to the public. And then continuing on with that public space where the, currently the dining area is here and the gym is here, we are extending back with an addition that'll put the dining on the back, that'll allow for the parents, as they pick up and drop off, to take advantage of that, of, of the dining for that area, and then converting the existing gymnasium, taking the existing gym, converting it to active space, and then building new area out on the edge. So we're expanding all of the public area in this location, and then we're adding classrooms, both here and here, for that added capacity throughout the building.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Terry, right?
Yes, sir.
Can you go back there? Can you identify, I, I was under the impression that the gymnasium, the, the new gymnasium is going to be on the backside of that building?
That, that is correct. As I was going through, the existing, the existing area, the, is being, existing dining is being changed to classrooms. The existing gym is being converted to dining, and then a new gym being added on, and then the state.
And that's what's on the backside is the new gym?
Yes.
That's what I thought, thank you.
Okay, to give you a look from the front at the, the entry aesthetic, currently it's more of an eclectic, more of a, I'd say more of a contemporary look that's out there now. We're looking at an aesthetic that blends more to the, to the town, more of a traditional expression. So we're continuing that around, if you are, if you continue up the drive, kind of looking back, there's the new addition that continues to wrap in front of the old, in trying to encapsulate the existing building with that more traditional expression. And then, as you go to the back, where the parents would drop off under this covered area, so you can see the, the gym beyond, to provide a nice covered area there, that again, that has a nice traditional arch approach there. So, that's a quick presentation, any questions?
I appreciate that, I, I couldn't quite get the, the look of it from these diagrams.
Yes.
That, that helps. Is that drop-off under the covered, inside those columns, or outside?
There is a, so the, the curb is here, and then just immediately off of the curb is this covered walkway. It goes here, and then back into the building, here.
Oh, okay. So the cars aren't driving into a covered area?
Right, they're not covered.
Well, I really love the architectural design, I mean, I think it's going to add high value to that neighborhood.
Good.
Looks really nice.
Thank you.
I just, and this may not fall in your arena at all, but I'm just curious, what is, are they going to replace that garden, or just wipe it out?
The garden on the back?
Uh huh.
Currently, right now, it's, it's doing away with it, and then that's something that'll be discussed over time, whether that is to be replaced or not. It is done by the PTA, so because that's where the fire lane needed to go, I have an opportunity to start from scratch.
It's just a lot, I know a lot went into that.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Very quickly, when do you plan on, I know we've already started some construction, when do you plan on starting the demolition that'll be associated around in the landscaping and, and moving on to the building?
Balfour Beatty Construction is underway with dirt work, setting the pad, doing some demolition to the site, and then construction will, basically starting immediately and running through the end of summer twenty-third, of this coming summer. So a lot to do. You'll start to see the building going up, and then more demolition happening.
And the objective is to be in the building by start of school?
Absolutely.
Okay.
One other question, Carolyn might be your answer. Having just been in Austin and had a presentation about the whole issue with the West Nile, one of the big problems was detention ponds. How do we anticipate this, I mean, is that you or that, who should I ask that question?
I imagine some of the discussion about West Nile might be more related to a retention pond than detention pond, sometimes they're combined. In this case, a detention, in this case, it's a detention pond, so if there is no rain, and it's been after a rain event for a significant period of time, there will be no water sitting inside that pond. Basically, what you'll have, a time period, depending on your length of storm, you might have an hour of water, two, depending on if it, if it continues on. But fairly quickly after that rain event, this pond will drain, and you won't have water standing inside this pond.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Madam Mayor, I'd like to move to accept the site plan for the Lakeview Elementary School, 100 Village Trail, applicant R L K Engineering, on the behalf of Northwest ISD.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made by Councilman Tiffany, seconded by Councilman Mayor. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time. I'd also like to add, thank you to the staff for all the help that we've had on this project, and we really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I think extending that drop-off, having been down at the school a number of times, is a really good idea.
Well, we're adding roundabout.
Our second roundabout.
Maybe we can put a fountain in that one.
I advertised a roundabout last week.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. I'm just trying to figure out what this, my next comments here, just a minute.
The preliminary and final plats, the next two agenda items, if we could combine them and, and talk about both the preliminary and final plats, and then go to the site plan, I think we can, we can consider the preliminary and final plats first, and then, and then move to the site plan.
And, and we have speakers who've requested to speak.
For item number eleven, the site plan, I, I think it's, I think probably their concerns are to do with the site plan, and if we, if we go ahead with the preliminary and final plat, then they can speak on, on item number eleven, the site plan.
Okay. All right. So we will then go into items nine and ten, is what you're telling me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. To consider and take appropriate action regarding a preliminary plat of Lot 1 Block A, the Church at Trophy Lakes, eleven point six oh three acres located at 800 Trophy Club Drive. Applicant Shane Harris, R G A Architects on behalf of the Church at Trophy Lakes. And item ten is to consider and take appropriate action regarding a final plat of Lot, what you just said, the preliminary plat?
Preliminary plat would be item number nine, and final plat would be number ten.
The final plat of Lot 1 Block A, the Church, Church of Trophy Lakes.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I, I would like to talk about these two together, because in order for the preliminary plat to be approved, the drainage information must be received and approved, and typically that might be a year before you consider a final plat. So drainage information is, is considered, a preliminary plat is approved, and then we come back with a final plat. But in this case, we're doing both together, and the, we've had several reviews to get the drainage to an acceptable point. The third review of the drainage was completed last week on Monday, January twenty-eighth. The applicant provided revised drainage info by email on Tuesday afternoon. That's where we were at when the packet went out to you, on, on the preliminary and final plat. The items on page forty-nine of your packet were still outstanding at that time. Staff has been working with, I should, I should say, the town engineer has been working with the applicant, and approval of the preliminary plat is subject to the drainage being approved. Mr. Rutledge spoke with the applicant's engineer today, and there is a minor calculation that must be corrected, and Tom, if I'm putting any words in your mouth, please, please correct me. Staff is asking that you approve the preliminary and final plats with the stipulation that that drainage calculation must be revised and approved by the town engineer, and they've indicated that they could probably take care of that tomorrow. On January seventeenth, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the preliminary plat with the stipulation that the flood plain note be clarified, and that has been clarified on the current plat that you have, note number three on the preliminary plat, and note number five on the final plat. The Planning and Zoning Commission's other stipulation was that the outstanding review comments must be met. Those have all been met except for that one minor calculation, which we do anticipate being corrected within the next forty-eight hours.
Okay. And the issue of any, any variance or anything, that comes in the site plan piece?
Right.
Okay. So the plat, okay. I want to say thank you, I mean, I, drainage is such an issue here, and I really appreciate your conscientiousness in really being on it, because that's just something that we, we've had so much problem with, that, thanks. Okay, and we didn't have any speakers for this part, sorry, I'm getting this straight, these are always confusing to me.
The preliminary plat is on, is up, and everything is okay except for this minor calculation that needs to be corrected, and then the final plat would be a duplicate of that, and the drainage is at the, the top right corner, and the, the private drainage easement is shown on both the preliminary and final plat. So we do recommend approval with the stipulation that that calculation, minor calculation for drainage be corrected.
And one of the things that I was noticing when I was looking through the plan, a lot of the drainage is going into over there, but there's a lot also going into the drains that go under the roundabout into the creek. And we built it correctly to handle that, right?
We did. What we did when we designed the roundabout, we, we had aerial topography, we, we anticipated where things would most likely drain, and so as we worked with the applicant's engineer on this, we did give them the roundabout plans and drainage studies that we prepared, so we made sure we had consistency with the two designs. And so, whatever drainage would come from the church site to the roundabout, we have upsized and sized our system to anticipate that any of the, the increased runoff that'll come from the church, either through this or any future improvements that they would have.
Okay, what about when it gets to the creek?
Now, all of that is being incorporated into the drainage study that Fries and Nichols is currently doing for you guys. So that's all anticipated, so everything that they've done, they're looking at a much larger scale, they've, they've anticipated that in their study.
All right.
Carolyn, how far out of WAC is the current, or, the, has, does this have to change to be approved in this calculation?
Very minor.
Yeah, you know, the applicant's done a good job working with us. I mean, you just heard before, on the school, we had a detention pond, these are the first two detention ponds that the town has ever had, and so this is kind of new. And although, you know, they've been patient with us, and we've been, I guess you could say, very picky about it, we're trying to make sure we're following our ordinance to the T in documenting everything about the, the calculations, so that anything ever happens in the future downstream or anything, and somebody wants to come back and check our math, or check the engineer records math, we can be assured that they have followed the ordinance. And so, it doesn't change the design of the detention pond, it's more of, of updating the calculation and providing some additional information, so it's documented on the plans of record. So we've, we've looked at that with them, we've talked to them, and we're confident that the plans as they're designed, they'll be okay. We just want more information on the plans, so we have great documentation for anything in the future.
And, and I'm sorry if you already answered, I know I asked about going towards the roundabout to the creek, but if it goes, there's some of the drainage going to the north.
That is correct.
Now, is that going to cause a problem for the people in the quorum?
No. Just like the previous applicant on the elementary described, what they did, what they did here is, they took whatever the, whatever the drainage is going, that amount of drainage that's going there today, they take that number, and then say, okay, here's how much additional would go there, and it goes into the pond, and the pond holds that so that it doesn't release any more than it's going there today. I always explain it like it's a bathtub. You go fill, you start filling your bathtub up, and it starts filling up, and you've got that drain. That drain in there, water gets, more water goes in, and that drain kind of is smaller, so it meters that out. And so that's basically what you've got, is just a giant bathtub there, and it's just letting it out at a slower rate.
Jacuzzi.
And, and the other thing, let me just say this, it hasn't, it hasn't come up, but I think it's one other element that's important to go ahead and say as a matter of public record. record. We, we have put on the fi- we had the applicant put on their final plat and on their site plan a private drainage easement, and we think that's important because we want them to own and maintain it, so that town dollars are not having to go out there and do anything with that. Now, we'll, if there's an issue, certainly we'll bring it to their attention, but it is, it is a drainage system to only support the church, and so we want them to be responsible for mowing it, maintaining it, and making sure that it functions, and so you'll see on the plat a reference to a private drainage easement. It's a little bit unique for us, but that's something we think's very important in there, and so that'll always be there. The elementary school was not plating, but we had them put the same note on the site plan for the elementary school, that that is a private facility to be owned and maintained by the school district, so that the town isn't having to go out there and maintain that.
Okay.
But the town could have oversight on it, is that correct?
Town always has oversight of all, anything that, that is within the town to make sure it follows your ordinance, just be like somebody not mowing, maintaining, or, or, you bet, always has, that's always in play.
Okay.
This may be for their engineer, but I notice it looks like we have two pond grading plans, one for Phase 1 and one for Phase 2. Are we coming back on Phase 2, tearing out Phase 1, or is that an expansion, or?
That's at their discretion, that was the choice that the applicant, and they can explain that to you when they come up here, but that was their choice. And that was a little bit, something that took a little longer because of the way they've decided to phase this, but we did look at, and that's what's going to happen, Phase 1 and 2 of the site plan is going to be considered tonight, so we had to look at the Phase 1 and 2 to approve those, and then make sure that the first phase functions well for whatever they're going to do in the first phase, and then whenever a second phase is built, that we can be assured that it'll function as well.
So they're redoing the pond at that point?
They, if they do those, if they phase that, they, they would come back in and do some additional work to the pond.
Looks like it's upsized.
That's just how that they've decided to do that.
Mr. Ten Managers, that's the way we would normally do it, or would you do a construction job, and then come back the next time when you're ready to do something else, and?
It's a private facility, so I mean, they're, they're certainly welcome to do that, you know?
May not be the...
That's, that's certainly their prerogative.
It's their money.
I have, I have a question concerning the, for the town staff, Phase 1 and Phase 2, and maybe for the attorney. We approved both phases this evening, is there a timeframe or an expiration on Phase 2 if it's not started within a certain timeframe?
That was one of the things that I was going to bring up during the site plan consideration, is because there is not a timeframe, they have not given us a timeframe for Phase 1 versus Phase 2. It could be, you know, they've indicated a couple of years before they start Phase 2, it, it could be a lot longer than that.
Okay, let's consider the, first, the, the plats.
Preliminary and final.
The preliminary and final plats.
So...
This hashtag the amendment.
Yeah, we don't do a motion for this.
It would be, you would be putting in a stipulation that the drainage calculation must be approved by the town engineer, and the way that would work is, I would wait then for an okay from Tom in order to move forward. The preliminary plat just becomes a file in the town offices, the final plat must be filed with the county, and that final plat must be filed before a building permit can be issued. So, so that we will wait for the, an okay from the town engineer, once we've got that, they'll get the signatures on the final plat, they need to get that to me so we can file it before they would be able to move forward with their building plans if their site plan is approved this evening.
I'll try it.
Yeah. All right.
I move to approve the preliminary and final plat of lot 1, block A, the Church at Trophy Lakes, 11.603 acres located at 800 Trophy Club Drive, with the requirement that the drainage calculations be corrected and approved by the town engineer and town staff.
Your time.
Prior, prior to...
Filing final plat.
Filing final plat, thank you.
Okay. Do you have a second?
A second.
All right, the motion's been made by Councilman Rose, seconded by Councilman Tiffany. Is there any other discussion?
I just wanted to make sure that motion's...
Good.
Yeah.
Clear. It sounded a little muddy.
Look who it's coming from.
No pun intended there.
The makers open to any suggestions for improvement.
I just want to make sure that the, the intent is run through, that, run, but like I said, it's basically up to staff, as I said, you know, unless we have a final plat filed that's approved, then they can't get a building permit, so that stops the wheel, basically.
What I understand the, the motion to be is that you're going to approve the preliminary and final plat, or you're going to consider approving it subject to the drainage calculations being approved by the town engineer, and getting the final plat filed before issuing any building permit.
Which is our normal rule anyways.
That's right.
Okay.
All right.
No further questions.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Okay. All right. Then we will move on to item number 11, which is to consider and take appropriate action regarding a site plan for the Church at Trophy Lakes, 800 Trophy Club Drive. Huggins, Director Huggins?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Okay, this is for site plan consideration of the Church at Trophy Lakes. There is a, let's see, this is the location, there is a 12,000 square foot building on the site, which is a church, daycare, and school. The site is zoned NS Neighborhood Services. The church plans to remodel and expand the existing building, adding 16,000 square feet to the building, including classrooms, bathrooms, a gymnasium, an expanded sanctuary, and parking, which triggers a site plan requirement with plans submitted and reviewed by staff, and ultimately a recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and finally approval by council. This is a building that's been out there for 30 years, but because they decided to expand, this is why we had rezoning, plating, and now site plan approval. This site plan was reviewed in accordance with the NS Neighborhood Services Development and Design Standard Regulations. There are nine items that do not meet the town's NS regulations. Those are briefly, those are outlined in your packet on pages 60 to 63, and I'll try and go over them briefly. The first two items that do not meet the NS zoning district regulations are the existing church building and the existing church steeple. Both items are shown here. They're, both are taller than the maximum allowed on the site, which would be 28 feet. The church is 37 feet 2 inches, and the steeple is 85 feet in height approximately, and the church requests that they be allowed to keep the existing building and existing steeple. Then there are new items that are going to be added to the site, which the church is requesting some consideration from the town regulations. The gymnasium, shown on the right side of the picture here, the new gymnasium will be 33 feet in height, the maximum allowed is 28, so they would need a variance to be allowed to have a gymnasium that tall. The north and west property lines, this is the west property line, is adjacent to residential and requires an eight-foot masonry wall. The property line to the west, this, this property line is shared with seven residential property owners, the town contacted those homeowners and the HOA. Four homeowners responded, three in favor of not having a masonry wall, one in favor of having the wall. Staff would ask that if you do waive this requirement for a masonry wall, that you do it only for this site plan. We ask that any site plan triggered in the future, or any future expansion of the church site, bring this wall requirement back under consideration. This is just to safeguard the residents, the future residents along this property line, because there is, I noted on page 62 of your packet, that there is a town requirement that parking facilities within 60 feet of a residentially zoned district require an eight-foot masonry wall, and if the church does expand with their long-term master plan, there could be parking within the 60 feet. On this picture, the, the residential to the west, to the left, there could be parking as close as 60 feet, and their existing wood fences, those parking lights from those cars, the, the lights from those cars would come through those wood slats, and so they might, at a future date, want to reconsider whether or not they, they would like a masonry wall, and whether or not the town would require it.
Carolyn, is that, is that the church's master plan? Did she have depicted there?
Yes, sir, it is. This is from the church and, and one of their long-range plans. The north property line, and I don't believe I have a picture of that, the north property line is adjacent to residentially zoned, privately owned property. The existing topography with a tall berm would indicate that a wall is not necessary. However, staff would ask that the applicant remove the comment on sheet SP1 that indicates this is park property. This, this note is on the north, on the, the top of the SP1 site plan, and I, I believe it's a little bit misleading, that is not parkland to the north, it is privately owned, residentially zoned property. So we just feel that that note could be misconstrued, and we ask that the applicant remove it. There is buffering required along the, buffering required along the residentially zoned properties, and so both the west and north property lines require a 40-foot setback area adjacent to residential, shall contain landscaping, fencing, berms, or trees to provide privacy to adjoining uses, and at this time, the applicant does not plan to put that in and ask for a waiver from, from that requirement. EFS does require an okay from the council. Stone, stucco, or brick is allowed as a masonry product, but in our regulations, EFS is considered a synthetic stucco, and so just to be clear, we ask that you do let us know whether that's okay or not. Planter islands, there are some, planter islands required every 12 parking spaces with the existing parking, the applicant is not meeting that. However, they do have this 10-foot wide grassy area in between the parking spaces, and they do plan to put trees down the center of this, the, this grassy island, and we do believe, staff does feel that that is a good trade-off, rather than having to tear up the existing parking to add planter islands every 12 spaces. The, the trees they plan to add to, to these, these 10-foot wide area, this 10-foot wide area would, would be a nice compromise. The parking spaces, they do plan to have, they're required by ordinance to have 179 parking spaces with their overall expansion of their church and school. They do not plan to, they cannot meet that at this time, and that's when phasing came in. We, we discussed with them the possibility of doing a Phase 1 and Phase 2. Phase 1 would be the school only, Phase 2 would be the expansion of the sanctuary, and the overall requirement is 179 spaces, with the school expansion, they'll provide 102, which will just be the existing parking, they're not going to add any additional spaces at this time. Eventually, with Phase 2, with the expansion of the church, the sanctuary, then they would provide the 179 spaces. The only concern that staff has with this is that if there is a school function, we have, we've, we've seen that, there has been one school function during the month of December where every parking space was taken, and they were parking on the grass. And if there are school functions, we, we anticipate that this may happen more frequently because this is a competition gym, they've indicated this is a competition gym, they'll have competitions, and parking could potentially become a problem. We've told them that they will have to police that themselves because it becomes a code enforcement issue then, just like the pond, just like the mosquitoes, we, code enforcement will be watching these things, and, and parking will be one of the things that if they begin parking on the grass, that's going to become a code enforcement issue, and we will have to address it. The applicant had indicated that they were talking to the premier academy about possibly sharing parking, but that is across the street, and I, I, we have found over and over again with code enforcement that people really don't want to park, they'll park wherever is closest, and if that's the grass, they're going to park, park on the grass. And then also, there, there's an issue with the dumpster, this is the existing dumpster, and I believe this has all been resolved. The new dumpster will be in this location, and the, the only thing I'm confused about, and I'm not sure we're, we're meeting the regulations here, is they're planning to provide masonry on three sides as required by ordinance, and a gate on the fourth side, but also they're required to landscape it on the three masonry sides, and the applicant will have to address how they're going to do that. I believe they're going to do that with planter islands, they're going to put some trees on either side, I guess, a, a tree in that planter island, that island there, parking island, and then some trees to the left of it. They need to also provide something on the backside of the dumpster as far as, as landscaping. So they're in compliance with what they plan to do with the dumpster, except for landscaping possibly on one side. The other outstanding items have been met, there on page 63 of your packet, there were five additional items, fire lanes, photometrics plan, landscaping along a gym wall, plant list that accurately lists all trees, the wheel stops and curbs, those have, have all been addressed. These are actually wheel stops from the Tom Thumb Shopping Center, but the, the church, what the church is planning to do is not put in any wheel stops. They have curbs throughout their parking, and they have moved the, here's some of the curbs you can see, and you see how vehicles hang over into the, the landscaped areas. Well, they plan to have grass everywhere where cars can hang over, there was one section, I don't think I have a good picture of it, but there was one section in the front parking area where they had put some Texas sage right there along the curb, and any car parking there would hit that, and, and it would die. They've moved the Texas sage back, so I, I believe they've addressed that. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the site plan, but there were many variances, they, they approved all of the waivers, including the five that have now been met. So those five items are not needed, it's the, the other nine that were listed in your staff report on pages 60 to 63. The, the applicant is here with several people to give you a presentation and to answer your questions.
Thank you. Then we'll listen to the presentation and then hear any of our speakers. So we get the presentation of, of what it is. Does that make sense to you, Carolyn?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Rick Gilliland, I live at 211 Phoenix Drive in Trophy Club, I'm the owner of RGA Architects, an office in Roanoke, we're the architects for the church. Well, I've, I've asked Pastor Barry Klingon to make a very brief statement to, to the council to kind of explain the, the genesis of where this project came from and, and the needs for it, and then I will give you a kind of a brief overview of, of what we've done up to this point, and then I've got, we've got a presentation that'll go through in detail some of the, the items that Carolyn has described, and, and try to give you a little more background as to where we are with that, with that part of it. So with that, I'll turn it over to Pastor Barry.
Thank you. Mayor White and the town council, I'm Barry Klingon, I live at 122 Park Lane in Trophy Club, and yeah, I'm privileged to be the pastor of the church there at Trophy Lakes, and just briefly say a few things to, before our architects explain all of these things tonight in detail. First of all, if I could, just take a moment, I get a rare opportunity, to say thank you to all of you for, for serving. Our church as a community of faith takes very seriously our... Our church as a community of faith takes very seriously our scriptural responsibility to pray for you and to honor you as the Bible teaches us. And we pray for you regularly at our church by name and for your family as well. And I won't be able to say that publicly. Also, very much appreciate Mike and Stephen. They represent you and our town very well, and we're very honored to have them. We meet Church of Trophy Lakes there at 800 Trophy Club Drive in the facilities that were originally built by the First Baptist Church, built before even the town of Trophy Club was incorporated. And when I came several years ago, it was a time for some change, and so we had a complete restart of the church and a new name. That's why we changed the name and had a new beginning. And during that time, as our ministries are growing, the church is growing, we knew that we would want to expand and renovate and bring our facilities up to date. There's nobody more happy to see these pictures than I am of finally getting some parking and landscaping and facilities that are in line with what should be in Trophy Club. Also, to expand that, our ministries, you know, the ministries of our community, especially our preschool ministry and our after-school ministries and summer program with youth and children have grown very rapidly. We currently have a waiting list for 2014 for our preschool program. And we, so we, you know, need these facilities, as happens many times with churches and other projects. The financing and the project, even though we've worked on it for years, comes together very quickly. And when it did, we put the pressure on Rick, our architects, to get us through this, to guide us through this. And I apologize for any stress that's put on our city with moving a little quickly when we had to do the zoning and all of this. It took a little longer, our time, and we're trying to get it in place to have ready for the fall of this year. And so we apologize for that, but also say thank you. Thank you for working with us to help us expeditiously get this project moving that needed to be done years ago. So thank you for that. We, as we began to plan on this, we partnered with RGA Architects, a local firm, Rick, a member of, lives in Trophy Club, knows this community, and so he could guide us through this, and we've, they've done a very good job of leading us through this. So I just wanted to give you a little history on that, say thank you, appreciate you and what you do, and let them come and bring the specifics to us.
Thank you.
I'm going to have to find the... First off, Pastor Barry is very correct in saying that we've been working on this project, and he would probably laugh at me, for many years. And when we finally kind of constituted the scope of the project we wanted to go forward, they started chasing financing, and obviously, we stole all the review time and construction time, getting the money squared away. And the, I guess, the inability to know for sure how much money they were going to be able to borrow constituted the reason that we had to phase the project into two pieces. And the phase-one is generated to accomplish and do everything that needs to happen for phase-one, and depending on when their final loan comes through and all that kind of thing, if there's money to do phase-two, we may do it all at the same time, we may do it, it may be separated by a matter of months. Carolyn mentioned that, you know, it could be years. Right now, the tone of the church and the mood of the church is, they want to get it all done. We just have not got final pricing in yet for the final construction. We don't know whether we can get it all done. There's a couple of things that are kind of driving that need. But in a general sense, I think Carolyn pretty much showed, the master plan that she showed you is admittedly kind of a pie in the sky kind of thing. We don't have any idea whether that's really going to happen in that kind of configuration, but it in general displays where the church is intending to take their development, all in a consolidated campus centered around a future sanctuary and classroom and support facilities around that. The site is the site. In general, the new facility, the expansion facility, has the existing church with some, the flatwork, and, I mean, the sidewalks and the parking and stuff in front of the main sanctuary is, it's heaved and broken, and it's, more than unsightly, it's almost dangerous, if not definitely dangerous. So as part of phase-one, we are going around in the front, and we're actually doing some of the site work that's ultimately more driven by phase-two, which is a sanctuary expansion and kind of a new entrance to the church facility. But as part of phase-two, I mean, phase-one, it is purely just that little bit of site work around the front, and then the addition of the classrooms and the gymnasium. And to address one thing, another thing that Carolyn talked about, the gym is sized to allow for, you know, UIL caliber competition. The height requirement that we're asking for the variance for is driven purely by the fact that they want to be able to hold a competition event in there someday without having to rebuild it. When you're talking about an academy school program that has, you know, I think up through third grade, maybe planned in the immediate term, they won't have the classroom space to go beyond that, we're not talking about a competition gym for a while. That would come really as much as part of the later expansions of the facility. But they didn't want to have to rebuild the gym, kind of like they got to do it at, what was it, Beck and Medlin a few years ago when they built them all too short. So what we're trying to do is build it smart the first time, and to do that, we just need a little more height than the straight zoning offers. I'd also like to add that because we got pushed to the point to actually start this process because of the church financing and all that kind of stuff, we kind of were robbed of the opportunity from a timing standpoint to go for a PD, which is really what we should have and would have liked to have done. What we did is we took the course that seemed to be the most expedient in order to get them the facility they need within the timeframe they needed, which is ready for school this coming fall. The NS zoning allowed all the uses, in addition to a whole bunch of other uses that they don't need or want, but it allows everything that they want to do to happen in that zoning classification, but it's got a few gotchas in it. And those gotchas are the things that we're coming to you for some help with. You know, the church's intent on a major upgrade of their facility, they want the facility to look first-class and Trophy Club caliber. And as a resident, I appreciate that, but in addition to that, I mean, it's the church's philosophy, they want to be a good neighbor, good citizen of the town. But they're a church, and they don't have unlimited funds, and so they're, you know, they're trying to do it in a manner that makes sense, in a... The, well, these are the discussion items that we'll be going through. What I wanted to do is point out a couple of items, just in an overall site planning standpoint. The existing church facility, when we talk about the expansion and the screening requirements and the, all that kind of thing, we're talking about a facility that is more than a city block east of that line of residential homes. And it's almost set back a block from Village Trail. So it's not like we're crowding up against the residential right now. Even in that master plan scheme that Carolyn showed you, the farthest west parking that we had all over, closest to the residential neighborhood, was actually seventy feet away from it. So we had no parking inside that sixty-foot zone that required the screen wall for the parking. So we're cognizant of what those rules are, and we want to do that. But as you might guess, it would be very expensive for them to have to run irrigation lines a city block away and run an irrigation system to feed some landscaping that is a block away from their facility at this time. And the idea is that we would like to defer that cost until we're actually developing over closer to that part of the site. With that, I mean, I think I'd like to, Shane Harris has kind of run this with my office, has run this slideshow through planning and zoning. I think he's probably got a good grasp, and would like to kind of walk through the slides and talk to you a little bit about the responses that we've done to the town comments. And we just appreciate your consideration and really appreciate town's help. I mean, it's been stressful, and it's been tough, but it's been driven by the fact that we're kind of in this time box that we've got to get going. And I know that they've jumped through hoops, and Town Manager and Carolyn have been fantastic, just, I mean, not that we haven't butted heads a few times, but it's been, even when we're struggling, they helped us keep this ball rolling, and a lot of times, it was, it required some above and beyond effort, so we really appreciate that effort.
Good evening. I'm Shane Harris from RGA Architects. Carolyn kind of went through each of the items. We have a short presentation that kind of expands on some of the items we're asking for a variance on. Ours aren't in the same order that Carolyn's were, so I'm going to kind of flip around. The, as she stated, the Neighborhood Services zoning ultimately requires one hundred and seventy-nine parking spaces for the phase-one and phase-two complete build-out. It's driven by the size of the sanctuary. Most of those additional spaces are needed because of the sanctuary essentially doubling in size from what it is now. Since phase-one is primarily elementary school and a gym, they, we were in agreement that phasing the parking requirement made sense. I think Rick got through these, but that shows the existing one hundred and sixteen spaces.
So you're actually removing fourteen spaces. I think that's, I have a concern with that, but go ahead.
To correct some of the, some of the site work that Rick mentioned near the front of the building, like you said, all of the existing site work up here is in really bad shape. So we're trying to correct some of that and then provide the required accessible parking places that will ultimately be required for the larger parking lot. So we lose some spaces for the accessibility spot and some spaces for the loading zone. And then the other reason is, right outside of the portage share, we didn't quite have the width requirement for a twenty-four-foot-wide fire lane. So it forces to restrip a few places here just to, just so we maintain that twenty-four-foot fire lane. Other than that, we're trying, we tried to leave as many of the parking places as we could, which kind of winds toward the other item of not having one island per twelve parking places. And then with the phase-two, just the sanctuary expansion up here, we then provide the additional parking. And it kind, it kind of marries up with the master plan that Carolyn showed. There's been a little bit of changes just here and there, but it pretty much marries up with it, keeping that distance from the west property line.
Should I ask a question now, or? I still have, I have an issue with this parking in the fact that you have, you indicated that there's been a problem already with the parking, and we're going to reduce it.
There was only, from the time this was submitted in early November, we started watching the parking, and there was only one day where all of the parking spaces were taken, and there was overflow, and they were parking in the grass. And that was around Christmas time, when there was some sort of program going on at the school. So we have not noticed a problem at Sunday services. We haven't noticed a problem day-to-day with the school. It's only been when there's a function at the school, and if they do have a competition gym, that could become an issue. But we have not, we have not found it a problem on a day-to-day basis and not on Sunday.
But you're increasing the capacity of the, forget the gym for a moment, you're increasing the capacity of the school. So if you have any program at any time during the year at the school now, you have a problem.
That is possible, yes. Yes, ma'am.
However, they can take care of that by shuttling people somewhere.
Well, they had indicated that they were trying to come to some sort of an agreement with Premier Academy to share their parking across the street.
Want people to be crossing through that roundabout, that would be helpful.
Sorry.
Well, that was not very nice.
Explain to me, why are we putting off the parking? Is it just financial? Is it simply a financial reason?
That's part of it, but the other part is just to, ninety-nine percent of the time, the parking isn't an issue.
Yeah.
Currently, I mean, they've been doing set parking counts for us since we started the project, and, you know, every Sunday, they're at fifty percent, sixty percent capacity. So they...
Okay, but if you never build phase-two, we're going to approve, if you're, what capacity is the sanctuary now? Forty or fifty percent? So if you get more members at the church, we're going to, and then we vote to increase the size of the school and add a gymnasium and reduce the number of parking spaces that you currently have. And then the town's growing, so you get a whole lot more members of the church. Now you're at eighty or ninety percent capacity. Where are those people going to park?
Just checking my numbers. The church is not fifty percent capacity. They've already gone to two services because they were so full that they had to. We're, the parking counts that we're talking about are at the crossover peak usage periods between services. So when we say that they're using sixty-five spaces out of the hundred and some odd that they have now, that is at their peak demand usage on a Sunday morning for the purposes of that. So, I mean, don't get me wrong, the parking lot right now is oversized for the size of sanctuary they have. Okay? It always has been. The, and the driving reason that they have to expand the parking lot is because of the size of the sanctuary, not, in other words, the, if we took the sanctuary out of the equation and started talking about the parking requirements for classrooms and that kind of thing, like what Lakeview had to satisfy and that kind of thing, the number of cars required for schools, we would be, we wouldn't have to add a car at all, probably for two or more expansions of the school. It's, the parking count for schools is very low. But for the purposes of what we're doing, what we're, the reason we phased the project was because that parking expansion represents a quarter of a million dollars that they don't have.
So it is, so it's a financial reason?
Well, but the reason they're not doing the expansion of the sanctuary is because to do the sanctuary expansion, they have to spend another $250,000 to build a parking lot. So rather than expand the sanctuary and the parking lot, which they can't afford to do, they took the sanctuary expansion off the table so that they could keep the parking lot the size that it is and just do the school expansion. Okay? So we're not, we're not, we're not trying to expand the sanctuary, but not the parking and just do the parking later. The thing that's driving the additional parking is the expanded sanctuary, and we're not doing the expanded sanctuary because they, at this point, they can't combine the, they can't afford the two of them.
I don't think you should file, I don't think you should file a phase. I think you should file them individually, and you need to meet, I think you need to meet the requirements of what you have on each phase. And if phase-one is, you can file separately than phase-two.
In essence, that's what we're doing. I mean, the phase-one satisfies the requirements for phase-one.
Because you're asking us to approve the entire thing, but only build a part of it. And you won't, otherwise, you wouldn't be asking for variances.
Well, we're, what we're, this is not so much a variance as it is, what we want you to do is consider that for the first part of the construction, the existing parking is adequate. And, but they don't want to have to come back through the whole site plan approval process. And, but, but they don't want to have to come back through the whole site plan approval process to be able to add the sanctuary and the parking because they hope that that's gonna happen soon.
But it may never happen.
It may not, but it may happen at the same time. And so, rather, rather than, rather than, rather than do it as two separate complete projects, which would separate them perhaps unnecessarily, what we want you to do is look at it from the standpoint of Phase One expansion requires no additional parking. We want to get approval to do that part. And if we have to stop there, we'll stop there. But while we're here, can we get you to approve a sanctuary expansion and the associated parking that goes along with that? So that if that, if that money becomes available in, in a month, in six months, we can go ahead and do it without having to backtrack through the whole process again.
Okay, go ahead.
The next item was the planter requirements. The zoning ordinance says that you're required to have one planter island per 12 spaces. The expansion parking that is associated with Phase Two meets that requirement. And as Carolyn said, the existing parking does not, you know, we, we kind of looked at it a different way. If we, if we didn't credit the internal island, we felt that the, the new part, the new landscape island at the front say, was, you know, added just as much landscaping as if we cut out four more parking places. So.
I, I think the thing Carolyn mentioned before, you're gonna be putting trees down that island?
Yes, down the center of this island here.
And in the existing islands.
Yeah, and on all the existing parking islands. But, yeah, we're just, if we, if we did provide the one per 12, it would eliminate these spaces.
We don't need to eliminate more spaces.
And for the maximum building height, as Carolyn mentioned earlier, the existing building has two, two places. The existing, the, the top of the building here and the top of the steeple both exceed the 28 feet. And then for the new construction, the, the gym height is 33 feet. That's drive from the competition gym is that you have to have 25 feet clear. So, once you get to 25 feet plus the structure of the building, it just takes you up that high.
Madam Mayor. Shane, I understand the phasing issue. This particular diagram shows a completely new steeple.
It, that, that's just how we had it rendered a long time ago. That, that, that's not an intended.
Are you intending to replace the steeple that's there?
No. No, it's just, it's a drafting issue.
It was different.
That's good. It is.
Very observant.
Yeah.
I, I have a question of Carolyn. The, this particular example, or is the height, not, I'm not talking about the steeple, but I'm talking about the gym because that's a new building. The steeple is already there. Does that not, when someone looks for variance, does that not require contacting the people in the area? And have we done that?
No, we have not done that. A site plan does not require it. And we, we talked about this a little bit earlier today, the, the town attorney and I. Typically, a variance that goes to the zoning board of adjustment would require a property owner notification. Yes, ma'am. But what we've done in Trophy Club traditionally is with site plan approval, we've allowed the Planning and Zoning Commission to recommend waivers and the town council to approve that in association with a site plan. And that does not require a property owner notification.
That didn't quite make sense to me.
Well, I mean, that's just what we've done in the past. You've, you've approved variances on the site plan itself as opposed to sending these nine variances to the ZBA.
I know, but I guess it would be my thought that if we're going to make something different from what our zoning is, that the people around it have, you know, that we would normally ask people if you're gonna change or build something.
No, our regulations do not require that. However, with the wall, we did feel it was important and we did contact those property owners and the HOA because it so directly affected them.
Can I ask you a question about the gym? There's a couple of gymnasiums that I have visited that are in the metroplex that due to height restrictions, they're step-down gyms. They're excavated and built lower so that they don't exceed the height restrictions of, of the community. Is, did y'all not consider excavating and lowering it?
I mean, to be honest, no, we didn't. The, the issues with.
I mean, in, in our soil conditions, with the clays and the, and the way the, the water works in it, it is, it is very, very difficult to, to create a, essentially a retaining wall that's part of your building and, and make that wall, one, waterproof so that you don't get moisture coming through the wall. But even if you, if you do that, the mold issues and all that kind of stuff that come along with, with having building space below grade. I mean, it's the reason we don't see basements in, you know, in any kind of volume in Dallas and all that kind of stuff. Just going down into the ground with, with a, with a building surface creates a lot of issues that are technically very difficult to solve in an absolute sense and, and also very expensive to solve. But, but the, I mean, we never, we didn't consider it simply because the, just the technical issues themselves were, were, were somewhat ominous. I mean, it was, it's very difficult to do. I might add that when, when we first started this, we thought we were working within a 40-foot height limit. And, and kind of at the 11th hour, we, we found out we were, we were kind of crushed down a little bit. So, it, it kind of put us into a pickle as far as the height restriction. So, we're, we're asking for some, for some help. And again, with the, with the point being that, you know, this is over a block away from the residential lot lines to the west.
What about to the south?
It's, it's, I mean, if, a city block is typically 300 by 300. We're like 250 feet from, from Village Trail and over 300 to the lot lines to the west.
What, on the wall, it's got the 33-foot dimension on it. What lighting is on that wall?
There, the, the lighting on the west facade is all ground-mounted lighting, just lighting back up at the building.
Okay.
Why I say that, at this location, there's a wall-mounted light that's, that's 100% shielded. It just shines light up against the wall, up and down.
There are no lights on top of the building shining down?
No.
They have a photometric chart in there?
Yeah, looked at it.
Okay, go ahead.
But I had the photometric chart for the baseball. This, this just showed more of the details of the existing building. How it, the existing roof's at 37 and the steeple's at 85. And there's, there's the dimensions you were asking about. The next one is the eight-foot masonry requirement. Guess it would be our stance. We'd like to defer any requirement to build the wall on the west or the north property line to any future phases that we get closer to the west or north property lines.
Would you, can I ask a question on that? When you say any future phases, are you talking something beyond Phase Two? Or are you saying in Phase Two, you will take care of the wall on the?
Beyond Phase Two.
Yeah, because Phase Two isn't gonna take them any closer to the problem.
Parking lot goes out there. Parking lot will be lit.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Okay, so I have to ask again, why do you not want to put an eight-foot wall along, the masonry wall along where the homes are on the one side? The other side, I, I agree. I think it's pretty with the berm. I think that's a great view. But why do you not want to put one where the homes are? The reason I ask is we're dealing with a fence situation. We've been dealing with a fence situation that happened a long time ago and it won't go away. So, I'm asking again, I happen to have visited some of those folks over there today and talked to them. And so, I'm, I'm wondering, two of the people told me, Carolyn, they didn't, they didn't realize that building was requested to be so high. They just had only addressed the fence issue. But I'm wondering, why, why do you not want to build that masonry fence?
We felt that it was so far away that it wasn't. It was only a barrier up, up against the residences that most of the ones we spoke with didn't even care for. And, you know, obviously the north, we had the same opinion. No one really wants to break up the, the grass.
I think the other side doesn't need anything. I think it's pretty.
It's primarily the distance away. We, we didn't want to, to build it now until we got, you know, the plan is to do something, a berm or landscaping as we get closer to that property line.
Can you go back to the, the, just, the chart you had with the?
I think this one shows, maybe show what you're asking.
Yeah.
Do you have?
340 feet from the back of the new gym?
That's correct.
Now, when the new parking lot goes in, how far is it from the parking lot to that?
From the parking lot, it's, where we're at now, it's about 80 feet from the, where we turn around, where the turnaround of the parking lot is.
No, Phase Two parking.
The Phase Two parking.
When, when Phase Two parking goes in, how, how far does it extend toward?
It, it gets to within 80 feet of the west property line.
Eight?
Eighty.
Eighty.
Closer than 90.
Yeah.
The par, the, that parking lot in Phase Two gets within 80 feet of the?
Correct.
And what you show there from the building to that wall is roughly one football field length.
Correct. I don't know if, if there's still a comment in the list, but there was some, there was a comment in our original report regarding the facade along Village Trail, that it was, that there was a large expanse, that it was, it was not, there wasn't enough, you know, ornamentation or change in elevation. And I guess one of the comments was that we could, we could address it similar to how Tom Thumb incorporated the wall design. And I guess our, when we came back to it, we were, the plan shows a little better. The Tom Thumb rear facade was 50 to 80 feet away from the street and we're 242 to 400 feet away from the street. There were, it's three times as long as the elevation we're dealing with. And, and we had just as many ins and outs, just, just not, not the exact design techniques that they used on the Tom Thumb.
Shane, isn't there a playground now in front of one wall and the other wall? You added landscaping at the request of P&amp;Z?
Yes, as part of the P&amp;Z meeting, we added some additional landscaping right here. And then just for protection, the, the new playground will be just out in front of this entrance. It kind of gets protected by more sides that direction, keeps the kids away from the parking lot. So, if we go back to that, we, we took two renderings of the new building. One from right here and one from right here. So, that would be the, the shot of the building looking straight on from Village Trail. And then that's the back end. You can just see, barely see the back end of the gym from the corner. Both of which, I mean, the landscaping will be all in front of this. And then the new building, or the existing building shields most of the new building from Trophy Club Drive. You wouldn't even see it, so. And then the last item, we didn't have in this presentation, but it regarded the use of eaves. I don't, I, I'd hoped that the slide was still there. I can go back to one of these previous renderings and show you. For the new building, we're proposing to use eaves. Most of it is above roof or above the entries except for on the west wall where there's a 30-inch brick ledge and then eaves above that. Primarily using it because of the insulation value we get out of it. We want the, we want to build the walls out of cinder blocks, concrete masonry units because from the inside, the impact resistance is better in a gym. And then on the outside, to be able to pass the energy code, we need a solid layer of insulation that Stucco doesn't provide us. So, it gets us the same look as Stucco and then gives us the insulation that we want as well. We kept it lower on the west side primarily because in the future, that's the direction we want to expand. And then the, you know, it's a lighter material. The west sun doesn't heat up the gym as much. I think that addresses each of the items.
Okay. Thank you. I think I'll let the people who wanted to speak know. I had Rebecca Smith.
I just want to make it clear that there are not going to be any 25-foot tall trees planted on this site. They're all three-inch caliper trees that are going to be planted with the landscape plan, not what's, what's noted on some of these renderings. That, that tree will not be there. It won't be that tree.
Yeah, until a long time from now. We learned about how trees take a while. Or die. Yeah.
My name's Rebecca Smith. I live at 110 Lake Shore Drive and my property backs up to, to the church. And I moved to Trophy Club back in 2002. And one of the reasons we chose that house was because of the unobstruct, unobstructive view. So, what, I just wanted to be on record that I definitely do not want a fence as a barrier there. So, I respectfully request that you waive that requirement.
Is your home the one with the metal fence?
No. I'm their neighbor. Just right next to them.
Thank you. Paula Jondra?
If you wanted to see it, his presentation, it shows the back of both of our homes. And that presentation, looking from the door, looking in the east.
That's my backyard. Okay. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, my name's Paula Jondra. I live at 112 Lake Shore Drive, next door to Becky Smith. And I also do not want a masonry wall along our backyard, closing in most of my backyard. We all moved, all of the residents on that side of Lake Shore Drive, moved there knowing the church was there, that we would be looking on the church, that there was a possibility that the church would expand. This was a decision that we made. We didn't have any problem with it. This is basically a quality of life issue for us. Our backyard not only has a slope, as you can see, because we had to put a retaining wall in, but it's also the smallest backyard on the, on the block. So, a masonry wall, number one, it's not gonna block a view. It might, I doubt that it will block much sound either and it will make us feel like we're living in a prison. Anyway. A masonry wall would actually come within 19 feet of the brick on the back of. the back of my house, just for your information. Um, obviously, when we get into phase three expansion, we would be in favor of doing, uh, you know, a, a large, well, I think it's a twenty-foot requirement for landscaping.
Forty.
We would certainly be in favor of that. Um, as far as, just a matter of clarification, the land to the north is private property, it is common area for the HOA, not a park. Um, all my neighbors that I've spoken with, the back of the wall, on the north side, all of them had the same reaction. Oh my God, we don't want that. So, um...
And I just would like to ask you one question, especially since your fence is open. Um, when they do phase two, not three, but two, with the parking lot extended, you're still okay with that?
Yes.
But you would like some buffering with tree, or?
Well, she's at phase three.
I don't think, until phase three, I think we'll be fine. Truly.
Okay.
So, we, the church has always been a great neighbor and we certainly have no problem with any of the variances that they've asked for. And I appreciate your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Can I add one thing about that parking? Just, I mean, we could go back to the slide if you wanted to, but the, the only part that even gets as close as that to the, to the residences is actually the turnaround. The actual parking spaces themselves all point south and north, so it's not like cars are going to be sitting with their headlights facing them for an extended, I mean, maybe a brief period, and obviously that's only when it's dark. And, I mean, it's not really part of the consideration that we're asking for, but I mean, obviously, when we get to those future phases, one, we're leaving like a seventy-foot wide buffer between our parking and the, and the residences, but we would certainly be berming and landscaping that area at that time. And so, you know, our, our intent would be to be good neighbors and to shield those lights from the neighbors, but I think there's ways to do it without necessarily building a wall that, that many of them don't want in the first place.
Okay, thank you. Alan Jondro?
I'm going to stay, I think she made her viewpoint very well.
Okay. Uh, it was, um, that, Shannon, those, was all the speakers we had on eleven?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to take a break? Okay, we're going to take a break for just a few minutes. Just... Go back into session. And, um, I think what, one of the things we're going to do is take a look at these exceptions individually, not, you know, we're not, uh, going to just go to the plan, but we're going to look at each one and decide on that individually. Did I understand that correctly with the council?
Could I just make one comment?
Certainly.
Uh, to the architect, on your plans that you submitted, uh, on your building features, you make a note on here that one-hundred percent masonry exterior eave is approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. I would like to point out that the Planning and Zoning Commission can't approve anything. They're a recommending body.
Carolyn pointed that out to us. The ordinance actually reads, um, uh, where it says that, it, it actually reads specifically to be approved by planning and zoning in the, in, in the, in that language. So, we added that note after we got planning and zoning approval, thinking that that was the appropriate thing to do. We, we've really got no issue with, I mean...
Okay, I just, I just want to point that out.
We, we think, we think eaves is the appropriate material regardless, but, but that was just a, uh, just response to what...
If that's the case, you wouldn't be asking for it tonight, would you?
Well, we didn't think we were going to be until we saw the agenda for tonight, so it was, I mean, quite literally, the, the ordinance actually states approved by P and Z, so we thought it was done.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, excuse me.
Mayor, I do have one question, which would, doesn't affect any of these waivers that we're going to be looking at. I would like to know when the portable classroom is going to be removed.
Part of the, uh, on, on the documents that is in there, it, it was stipulated that the portable classroom is removed, uh, when they take occupancy of the building, of the classroom building. So the phase one building is essentially being built to replace that portable classroom.
I missed that note.
Okay.
Yeah, that note was on there. When they had the certificate of occupancy, I think it says.
I, I, another general question. On, uh, on the very last page under water notes, number seventeen and eighteen, it says the valve may only be operated by city personnel. Do we operate water valves?
Uh, the mud, the mud employees do that.
That's just a typical town note that is included within the town's water.
Okay, I, I, I appreciate that, but unfortunately, we're not a typical town.
Well, no, I mean, I think it's, it's in the...
This is the town Trophy Club's ordinance.
Okay.
Okay.
We're a happy town.
Okay.
Did the mud review this?
So, if we're going to take these waivers one at a time, I'm going to start on page sixty. And that would be the existing non-conforming structures. Uh, the church building height, with the building and the steeple?
Mayor, let me do, let me do this. I move to approve the waiver for the church building height as an item one on the, on page sixty.
I'll second. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, we're good then. And that includes, did that include the steeple?
No.
No, okay, go for it.
That's the next page.
All right.
Let me write down approved here, so I can keep track of, for the final. Mayor, I move to approve waiver for steeple height.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Now we move on to the new construction and the first item is the gymnasium height.
We'll get it into discussion.
I have a question.
I was, Mayor, I move to approve the waiver for the gymnasium height.
Second.
And we're in discussion.
Now the discussion.
In your filing, it says that the gym needs to be twenty-five feet tall clearance, but you're asking for thirty-three feet. What's, what's the extra eight feet for?
There's, the, the structure is nearly five and a half feet thick. I mean, to span, to clear span the sixty-five feet of the gym, it, you, you get about five of that eaten up in structure. The slope to, to get water off the roof eats up about another foot and a half. And then we've got a parapet to screen any penetrations or whatnot that would be on the roof. So it's the parapet height that's the thirty-three feet. It's, it's like a foot and a half at the high end and it's sloped, like I said, it slopes down a foot and a half or so downhill to the short end and then you've got five and a half feet of structure. It, we've, we've screwed it down as low as we can go.
I just, I'm a simple man.
No, no, that's it.
You know, and you mentioned that, the parapet, does that, um, how does that work? I remember getting into this a lot with...
Screening AC.
About screening air conditioning and that type of thing.
There's no air conditioning equipment on top of the gym.
Okay.
Okay. The, all of that is on the roof of the lower structure adjacent to it and the parapets are high enough to completely screen that equipment.
Okay.
So, I mean, the parapets are taller than the equipment, so there's, you'd have to be above it to see, look down on it.
Okay. Good, thank you.
I don't understand.
All right.
Yeah.
Um, any other comments or questions? I personally have a little bit of a heartburn over the notification here, but, okay. All those in favor of the waiver for the gymnasium height? I'm only bending because of the distance, but I, that, I, I'd like us to look at that particular, um, thing in general.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. Um, okay, the next thing is item four, the masonry wall on the west and north sides of the property.
We'll get it into discussion. I move to approve the masonry wall eight foot on the west and north sides of the property, the waiver for the masonry wall.
Waiver, okay.
Move to approve the waiver for the masonry wall eight foot on the west and north sides of the property.
I'll second. Okay.
I would move to amend that motion, Mayor.
Okay.
I would move to, uh, approve the waiver for phase one only. I think we need to revisit this at phase two, give the homeowners a chance after it's built during phase one to see it and see the building and see what they want to do, but I'd like to revisit it again in phase two.
Okay, that's amendment. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, well, we're at the discussion point for anybody that, unless there's any other amendment. I personally, um, agree with this waiver. I, I would like to figure out how, and may, maybe this phase two covers it, but if we didn't have that phase two, then we at least need to make it conditional. This is not a gen, a waiver waiver. This is only for now. Right? Only for this project.
The motion is to, for phase one only.
It only, it only holds for phase one.
Right.
They'll have to come, it'll have to be cleared prior to phase two then, correct?
So that doesn't make it, it's the, we talked about making it a conditional, like, that phase one piece would cover that. Is that correct? I just want to make sure we've, we've done what we need.
They can't do anything beyond phase one without revisiting it.
If we do that, okay. Is that correct, Carolyn? You're looking a little...
You, you want to revisit it with phase two, which, are you saying then that you're planning to only approve their site plan for phase one this evening, that they have to come back?
Just the masonry, we're, we're talking about the masonry fence only right now.
Okay.
But if they wanted, if, if and when they get around to phase two, before they can do, they're going to have to get a variance on that masonry fence again.
The wa, the waiver would only apply to phase one.
I would really lean, okay, I'd, this, I would lean towards making that a conditional waiver only for this project, but I don't know that I'd, I'd break it between phase one and two.
The only reason, Mayor, once they build that big tall building back there and the, and the neighborhood gets a chance to look at it, we're going to do what the neighbors want. So, if they get, they think after it's built and it's as tall, like the two people I talked to today, then if they decide they'd like to have a fence put up, we can, we can put the fence up in phase two or we can give them a waiver in phase two. But once we approve it, you can't do anything if they decide they don't like it.
Mayor, if, if they choose to develop anything else, they got phase one and phase two, if they choose to do any other development on that property, it would require another site plan and, and that masonry wall requirement would still be there. You'd have to address it every time they do a site plan.
I, I want to be assured of that, that if we, if we approved it for this plan...
That's right.
That, that waiver would not go beyond this project.
If they have, if they come back with additional, if they come back with additional development, improvements on that property that require a site plan, they'd have to, we, you'd have to review that issue all over again.
The masonry wall is tied to this site plan and for, you may waive it for this site plan or call it for phase one, however you want to make that notation, it's clear that it is tied to this site plan.
Okay. I just want to make sure that, that waiver didn't kind of go along with the property.
Nope, it goes with the site plan.
Okay.
So any other future improvements would require another site plan and you'd have to address that issue at that point.
Okay, now, the second part of my question then is if we approve the amendment and say it's only for phase one, is that, can you do that? I mean, without them having to redo?
Well, I mean, it's phase, they've chosen to, to put it forward in phases, so each phase stands alone.
Okay. All right, is there any other discussion?
I guess, I, I need to kind of get Claire here. I mean, I'm, we, we seem to be going through a lot of hoops here. I don't understand why we just don't, they don't amend their site plan to say, here, this is phase one, and then they come in with amended site plan for phase two. Because the process for amending the site plan is not near the, the process that you go through for the first phase and it can be done and addressed quickly. And then you're, you're not going, well, is it there, is it not there in its run? Here's phase one, this is what phase one concludes and we're done. Isn't that simpler? And if not, tell me where I'm wrong.
I, I think that's a good suggestion. They, we, we went to phasing because they couldn't meet the parking requirements and that was the solution we could come up with to, to allow them to not have the required one hundred and seventy-nine spaces. I don't know what their timing is for phase two. I, if it were soon, then I can see why they would not want to come back to, to do another site plan with, with phase two. But I, I, in, in the three months we've been working with the applicants, I haven't gotten a good feeling for when phase two might happen.
The, the current feeling is that it is imminent. Um, their loan package looks to be much better than, than, um, than not. So, I mean, the idea is that they need the expanded sanctuary to help support the school and, and vice versa. So, the idea is that it go, go forward and I, I might add that it, you know, obviously it's not that we can't meet the parking requirement, it's just we weren't sure whether we could afford to meet the parking requirement of the expanded sanctuary, so we broke it into phases. In order to give the church the flexibility to, when the prices come in, if it, if, if this is a doable deal in one, in one phase, that's what we would prefer to do. Because there's the economy of mobilization and everything else with the construction. So, the idea would be that, I mean, our, our preference would be to, um, maintain a site plan approval for a, a two-phase project that allowed them to do that project as soon as the funds became available to do it. And if that, if that happens to be concurrent to phase one, then so be it. But it, it could be so quickly afterwards that, that having to come back through this process again, because I'm not sure exactly how you would do an amendment to the site plan to add phase two without having to go through the whole sequence again.
You would have to go through the whole sequence again.
I mean, basically, it would throw, if, 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 if the dollars come in right, basically they would lose every advantage of being able to do the project concurrently because they can't start it until we come back through site plan approval.
I think if you...
Is there, is there a fixed time on the prop, you're only really held up by P and Z on their timings and meetings and monthly meetings?
And the...
So they can call a special meeting?
No, sir, it's not that. It's, it's, for instance, when they first submitted their project, we started going back and forth with review plans. They submitted their plans, we reviewed them, we gave them comments, and typically this goes back and forth two or three times. In this particular project, after the first set of review plans went out, the applicant chose to go a little bit different route and meet individually with staff members or the Planning and Zoning Commission, which delayed, delayed us in moving forward. I would suggest, if we have to do this again, that they try and stick a little bit more to the procedures. But if you're going to approve this site plan this evening for phase one and phase two, I, I would suggest that you make sure that the applicant understands that the entire phase must be constructed. All of phase one must be done, all of phase two must be done. It can't be piecemeal. They can't pick and choose what they're going to do. This is a site plan you're approving and it all needs to go together. And, uh, from what they've told us, going back to when they submitted in November, I, I believe they're hoping that the school expansion is going to help fund some of the church expansion too. We know from other schools that, that doesn't always happen. Um, and that's why I don't have a lot of confidence that this might happen soon. They, they know, they certainly know their finances. They, they know, they certainly know their finances. And, and whether or not they're forthcoming, I hope, I hope they are. But I just think we need to make sure that what we approve tonight, that the applicant clearly understands, they have to construct it all. It, it can't be piecemealed. They can't do phase one and then come back and say, oh, we need a few more parking spaces. So now we're going to build part of the parking and, and eventually maybe expand the sanctuary. It, it's, this is a site plan you're approving, they need to do this project. Otherwise, it has to come back for a new site plan. And that does mean meeting all of the requirements of the NS zoning district regulations, which means landscaping, height, masonry product, all of that, again.
I certainly understand the, you know, the challenges of, of, of the church. You know, like I said, and it's certainly not my attempt to burden the church with the process. It's just, this seems to be an awkward way of getting there without having a process. If, if staff's comfortable with phase one, phase two, and this is, and this is the site plan, and if, and if anything changes, basically, then that, that's a new process. And site, and site plan changes.
Staff is comfortable with phase one and phase two, as long as phase one is built. And if they go move forward with phase two, they do the entire phase two. We're not comfortable with piecemealing phase two so that they expand the parking lot and not the sanctuary, as an example. Because a site plan wouldn't say otherwise.
Is that we got three phases? Is that, well, we need to, we need the new park, we need the expanded parking lot only when we expand the sanctuary facility. So when that happens, those two kind of come side by side. We do have some concerns with losing parking places when we're, when we're already possibly in a crowded position. What I'm hearing is that, okay, this is a competition gym, but it's not going to be competition until you get to at least sixth through eighth grade, which you don't have in this building phase, if I understand it right. Because you're only adding like, what, six classrooms?
Yeah, but if you're thinking of a UIL level competition gym, I think you have more in mind for it than this school.
Well, looking at the plan, there is no room, I mean, you come in, there is no room for any, well, you got 10 feet looking, looking from your design plan. You got a court, and you've got a very small site area, and that's it. It's not going to be a typical, what I call, game gym that you go look at, let's say Northwest ISD and something like that.
Correct, I mean, we, the, the whole point of building the gym, the size, the height that we're doing it, is, and, and, and it, it kind of dovetails into the parking requirements for a gym like that. We're building the gym so that it could be used competitively in an environment where they have to comply with those UIL type requirements. Those needs are not going to be there for some time. But we wanted to avoid the lake, the, the beck and, and melon trap of building a, a facility that's not big enough and then having to build a new one when they do get to that point. They need it, they need a gym facility for the younger kid ages to do their activities and, and to do that kind of stuff. But, you know, for, for an elementary school scenario, they don't need a gym that's that tall. It's just, in the interim, it doesn't make sense to build one now and then have to build another one later. We're just building the right height this time. And, and because, just because it's big enough to be a competition gym, doesn't mean that we necessarily are going to be scheduling tournaments of high school kids. And, and having that happen, you know, I mean, it's just, that, that's not, that's not the ministry of the church. I mean, it's, it's, it's not the intent, that, the gym is to serve the church.
Need to bring back to amend that.
Okay. Well, that's what we're working on. Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, we're not, I apologize. Okay.
Call the question on amendment.
All right, so we have the vote for phase, the amendment, which is to make that...
And this is vote on the question that he called.
Oh, thanks, Glenn. Okay.
I called the question on the amendment.
I know.
So we have to now vote on calling the question?
Yes, being, it's, in other words, you're going to move forward on amendment.
Call the question.
All right, all in favor of calling the question?
We did.
Okay.
Now...
All in favor of the amendment, which is to make this waiver on the masonry wall applicable to phase one and requiring them to come back now for phase two. And, just, all right.
That's the question.
Yeah. All those in favor of that amendment?
I don't, I, I, I think you messed it up. Because I, I need to understand, I, what I heard was staff was clear, they go phase one and phase two.
That's correct.
And now what I'm hearing on this amendment is that we're not doing phase one, we're, and two, we're doing phase one, and then they're going to come back to council for phase two.
That's not what staff said. Staff said they're comfortable with phase, as long as they do phase one all at one time and phase two all at one time. Am I correct, Mike?
Right, but the require, the, the thing, and I'm sorry, we got a little confused here. The requirement to come back for the waiver approval again in phase two.
Just for that masonry wall.
Is that going to make them go, have to go through the whole process again?
Well, so, and, and I may have to call on the town attorney to help me here. If I, if I'm understanding correctly, you're saying that when they get to the point where they want to start building phase two, we have to bring this back before council only to consider the wall, whether or not the wall needs to be addressed at that time? That is the motion that is on the table.
And that is okay, if that, if it works that way?
Yes, ma'am, because what, what you're doing is approving phase one, waiving the masonry requirement for phase one only.
Yes.
Okay, now, I lost my question. Oh, if, your goal, and I understand it, about seeing the height, right? What if they get their financing and they're going to do phase one and two right on top of each other at the same time?
Well, if they do it at the same time, and they're, it, it's, that's a phase one project. But they're going to have to come back to do the phase two portion of it. All they got to do is go up here and file, and come before the council. Is they ever going to do the whole thing?
Just wanted to understand. Okay.
Yeah, in this case, the people are not going to get a chance to look at it.
That's true.
Okay.
Do you need to start the vote over?
I think so. Is everybody clear on vote, we're voting on the amendment of requiring the, of approving phase, the waiver for the masonry wall for phase one only. For phase two, they would have to come to the council only.
To address the masonry wall.
To...
Address the masonry wall.
Address the masonry wall only.
Yes, you got it.
Okay, all those in favor of the amendment? Okay.
I need to approve the motion.
Yes, so now we would approve the, the motion.
As amended.
As amended, thank you. All those in favor? Okay. That was hard.
I'm making it hard.
You're on a roll, you're on a roll.
Oh, I have to keep going?
Keep going, number five.
Mayor, can I ask a general question?
Uh huh.
Does the camp, does any of my fellow council members have any issues with the rest of the items?
Yes.
Is there one specific?
Well...
My goal is to see if we can approve everything but, or something like that.
Well, if we don't have any issue, we can go through it, we can do it quickly.
You want to do a consent agenda?
Yes.
I want to talk about the landscaping.
I want to, uh...
Number five.
Okay.
I wa, I want to talk about buffering.
That's landscaping.
That's fine.
Okay, that's the next one, so let's go for it.
I move to approve, I move to approve the waiver for buffering.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Okay, I have a discussion. I want to, I want to point out that we're talking about one of the key intersections in our town. Built next to one of the largest capital improvement projects the town's done in many years. And as you drive down Trophy Lake, you can see down that side. And as you drive down Trophy Club, you can see down by the berm, and you can see all of that area back there. And I will, I want to recall and bring the council back to when we went through this same process of approving the LDS church. And I recall the point was made that that was on a very major intersection. And we made them jump through hoops. I remember even, they have a little me, outdoor meeting area, as I recall, with some posts. We were even talking with them about what color the posts were going to be, how they were going to be finished. We made them put a sidewalk in, we counted plants, they went way beyond. They probably put in enough plants to qualify for both churches. But it's on their site, they gave us land. I, I'm very uncomfortable in the fact, I understand that the architect says they don't want to run irrigation way out there to nowhere. But we wouldn't do this for any developer, we wouldn't do this for anybody that comes in here building something in this town. And I, I think you set a dangerous precedent when we start waiving landscaping. How much money did we spend landscaping all of those new islands? I, I believe that that landscaping needs to be put in, it needs to be put in during phase one. I, I, I just don't see any reason to waive that whatsoever.
Can I ask a clarifying question? This buffer area is really to the south and to the, what I call, the west?
To the north and the west.
The west, really, is the buffer, is the...
Well, where the residential area and where it ties into the HOA.
Yes, sir.
Correct? Not, not any of the opener space between Trophy, the Trophy Club Drive and Village Trail.
There is landscaping required along Trophy Club Drive that they have met.
Right. So I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with...
We had some pictures.
I, the part I'm struggling with is that the view that you're looking at, I mean, you're looking at creating a buffer between the residential area and, and, and between there and the, the HOA and, and the pond area. I mean, the area I'd be more concerned where it would be, the area in the corner, in the corner of the church and in front of that.
I don't care about the pond area and the berm. I'm talking about on that area back behind those, in, between the church building and those homes.
On the west side only.
But you know, Mr. Mayor, Mayor, Council Mayor, when we talk about the LDS church, there were hundreds of trees down there. And they were getting ready to be pulled out. Currently, right now, there are no trees. So we're very accustomed, frankly, of looking at the, the property the way it is. And even the berm on the north, we're, we're accustomed to that. So to ask them to put a lot of trees in there right now, I think is probably more than we should be asking.
Why would that be? That's our ordinance.
Well, their, their ordinance is to replace trees and to keep the trees that are there, correct?
No, ma'am, that's not our ordinance. That, that's one ordinance, but there's another ordinance in that buffer zone that it's to be landscaped.
Which, you mean, the one on the north side?
The one by the homes, whatever direction, it's north or south.
Well, and, and, but right now, it's not.
But they're, they're filing for a new filing, and they now come under that, before, they didn't come under that.
Because, because, the difference, Jeanette, is because when they built the church originally, we weren't even a town yet. So we didn't have any ordinances. So that's why, that's why we had to give the variance on the height.
The, the area that you just approved to vary, the masonry wall, they no longer have to do that masonry wall unless they come back for phase two and reapply, right? That's the area that we're talking about. The folks that came and talked to you, behind their homes, that 40-foot buffer. I just want to make sure everybody is clear about what we're talking about.
I'm, I'm, I'm honestly, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm very clear on the area that we're talking about, all right? I just had my compass flipped around.
But not everybody is, so...
My challenge is, is that normally, a buffing area is designed so you don't build anything between there and the construction. You got 200 and, 340 feet right now between there and the next construction item based on phase one here. So there's nothing there, except dirt. And, you know, and only when the parking lot gets expanded in phase two do you become within 80 feet. And then I would probably say, once that's done, looking at the current landscape plan, there's very little done anywhere between the end of the parking lot and the residential area. And I would think that would probably need to be addressed there. That's, that's the closest that, that, that you come.
I would agree.
And, and, and back to the north, I guess, is you have the HOA area and...
The pond, right.
And then the pond, and you have, and you have, and you have that view. Now, if I'm confused...
So are you suggesting that we give this waiver for phase one only? And when they want to bring the parking lot down there, we revisit it in phase two, like we do the wall?
That's, that sounded like a be an awesome plan, Councilman Mayor.
Madam Mayor, I move to amend the motion that's currently before us. I move that we approve the buffering for phase one only, and the variance for phase one only. And if and when they ever want to move to phase two, they come back to the council for a, a continuing variance on the buffering.
Second. Now, I have a question. Because we've had the discussion, but we talk about setback area adjacent to residential. Is this buffering area unlike the fence in that it's only on the west side, it's not on the north side?
It is on the north side as well. It is required on the north side as well.
But it's not next to...
Well, I understand, but we don't have to address that right now, we can address it phase two, good.
Yeah, I, I guess we're all a little bit, a little bit sensitive about this 40-foot buffer area, landscape buffer. Because we've had a lot of issue. And, and, and I have to agree with one thing that, that Mr. Mayor pointed out, is that, you know, with the other church, they, they built the sidewalk and a park area and donated that property to the city and a whole lot of things. And we've just paid a lot of money for property from you, so...
As I look, as I look at this issue, just the issue in general, I don't see a requirement. I mean, it would be nice to do landscaping over there along the lake area, where, where, buts the lake. That would, that would be nice. But in my mind, the real landscaping issue is going to develop down along the back of those residences. And so as I look at doing this, I mean, in my mind, it takes a long time for a tree to grow. And I would be looking, if I owned that property, planting those trees last week.
Actually, it'd be a lot cheaper than having to make them look larger later on.
But that's just, that's just my personal opinion.
It does tend, I think the, the whole, one thing, I, I'm a mixed opinion on it. But one thing that, when putting all that additional building with the gym and the school and everything, you're bringing a lot more focus to the whole property. And it's going to be then a lot more noticeable that that looks terrible and totally barren. So that, to me, I think that, you know, things that people don't notice when you're not, you know, having all of this there, it just creates a different environment.
Address something. We're talking about a condition that, like you've said, has been there a long time. And we're talking about a fairly small expansion to, to, to a facility. After timber, I'm, I'm a resident here and I, and I feel a little obligated. This council, in a matter of just a couple of moments, passed a 33,000 square foot expansion of Lakeview Elementary with, with driveways and all kinds of stuff that get much closer to residential space. I mean, a, a much more massive site that, that does not have... I mean, a- a much more massive site that- that does not have even a fraction of the landscaping that we are putting in on this project on their entire facility now. It- it- it seems like we're- we're beating up a relatively small project for not living up to something that is- that is a direct result of- of the fact that... I mean, we can go through a lot of things, but I mean, the- the zoning ordinance requires...
They were not, excuse me-
Understand, but-
They were not asking for any waivers.
I- I understand that, and I'm not sure I really understand why, because I think the ordinance requires any- any place that re- that... In other words, you can't have a kindergarten in our residential zoning, the way I was reading it.
I- I'm sorry, Mr. Gilliland, that's- that's not correct.
I mean, the way I understood, but- but I mean, all- all- all that notwithstanding, I mean, my point is that-
But you've said a couple of things that are not true, sir.
Okay, then- then, the- the way I read it, but I'll take that back, okay? Let's just say that they're not, that- that they're perfectly fine. But I am saying that you're talking about a much smaller facility that is much farther away from any residential property. And, you know, I mean, we're- we're debating whether or not it's a good idea to- to landscape. And we- we are asking for a waiver to not have to put in, you know, seven hundred linear feet of buffer landscaping against seven residences that currently don't have that- that landscaping in place, all because a block away, we're building a sixteen thousand square foot building that's five feet taller than the- than the ordinance allows. And- and I- and I just feel like there's- there- there's a level of scrutiny here that- that I don't- I don't really necessarily think is warranted. And I'm- I'm not saying that because I've designed the facility or anything like that. I mean, I'm- I'm just talking practically as a- as- as both a person and as a resident. I don't- I don't understand, um... I mean, I understand what you're trying to do and the- and the- and the obligation you have to protect the residences and all that kinda thing, but I mean, we're- we're talking about a relatively... I mean, we've- we've, at- at P&amp;Z's request, we came in and added a whole line of trees along the west side. I mean, the whole west side of the building is- is fairly heavily landscaped now. We've got like ten, twenty trees along that stretch, um, near the building that- that would mitigate the view issue. I mean, I- I'm not sure I understand what planting some trees within a forty-foot strip behind a solid wood fence really gains you in the short term, when ultimately, all that stuff will be addressed in the next round of site plans, when they actually build something closer enough over there for it to- to matter.
I will say, I understand your concern, however, I don't appreciate your- the sense that, you know, we're- we're looking into one more than the other. They did not come to us with a variance that we had to discuss. It is our obligation to our citizens to evaluate any variance that is brought to us. And believe me, P&amp;Z is not the one who is going to be accountable for whether that variance goes through. We are. We have to answer to our citizens. This church was built before we were a town. Therefore, they were not subject to the rules and the requirements of the zoning of this town. Now, we have to look and see how it fits best, because you opened the door with putting out a plan. Now, we have to look at the whole thing. So, I don't appreciate somebody saying to us that we're putting more scrutiny on you than someone else. It is a different situation. That has been through many iterations of the zoning, of applying to the zoning, and they did not ask for any variance, so therefore, we did not need to discuss it.
I understand.
Okay. Where were we?
Well, we had-
On the buffer.
We- we had a motion discussing, uh, Phase One-only waiver for buffering.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on that motion, amendment? All those in favor?
Of the amendment?
Yes, of the amendment. Okay. Opposed? Okay.
Now, we need to approve the motion as amended.
Okay. Now, we- we have the motion, uh, calling the motion as amended. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor? Okay. All right.
Other than that, I'm through.
Those not in favor, maybe? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay.
Did that pass?
Yes. Yes.
Four to one?
Did you? Four to one.
You were opposed, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Number six. Uh, now, does anyone have any question on the remaining?
Ephes. I'd, um, okay. I'd like to discuss the parking spaces, but, uh, to do that, let's... I move to approve the waiver for Ephes and Planter Islands.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay.
I move to approve the waiver for the one hundred and seventy-nine parking spaces.
Second. Okay.
As- as I look at the parking space issue, the real driver in this, I think, gets down to the chief, the fire chief, and building occupancy. Not necessarily the square footage of the building. I guess that may be the way it's designed. But if we drop, if we have a current occupancy, and I don't know what that is, and you're dropping back to a hundred and seventy-two spaces, and you look at your average attendant size, do you work with that reduction? And if you don't, what's your alternate building, what's your alternate parking plan? Do you have an alternate parking plan?
Currently, that's the, I guess that goes back to the parking count that the church has been- been checking up for the last few months. They, at the sixty percent capacity parking they're at now, at the rush hour of- of on Sunday, they're occupying about sixty-five cars or parking spaces. So, the one hundred and two still meets that requirement. It would only have been on the one or two opportunity, or one or two occasions a year that they, when they have a, uh, when they have some sort of function, that it gets close to capacity.
Okay. So, I'm looking at sixty-two, so I would say that the average service size is, magic math, between one hundred and thirty to one hundred and fifty, uh, in the sanctuary at one time.
A little bit higher than that, but...
Okay. That's- that's all I had on that. Uh, I'd- I'd done some statistics on it, but that's alright. I moved to... Oh, I already got the motion on, right?
Anybody have any other comment? Okay. All those in favor of the waiver on the parking spaces? Opposed? Okay. All right, out of nine.
Uh, move to approve the waiver for the dumpster.
Actually, no waiver is needed for the dumpster. There was only one outstanding item. They just needed to provide some landscaping along the rear of the dumpster. They've agreed to do that, so that actually moves over to, i- it will meet the requirements. And they will put in the landscaping around the three sides. Okay.
Okay, let me have a shot at the final motion.
Well, let me just ask you a quick question. Carolyn, have we covered everything that needed to be addressed on the waivers?
Yes, ma'am, that is everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I move to approve the site plan for the church at Trophy Lakes, eight hundred Trophy Club Drive, Abclint Shane Harris, RGA Architects, with the following waivers. Church building height, with the following waivers approved. Church building height, steeple height, gymnasium height, masonry wall with, as amended, buffering, as amended, Ephes, Planter Islands, and a hundred and seventy-nine parking spaces, also with the understanding... Let me find that note. That each phase must be completed in its entirety, and phases may not be piecemealed. Do I have that correct?
Did we get that?
Makes sense to me.
Everything that needed to be? Second. Thank you. I'm just checking with Patricia and Shannon here, make sure.
And I'm reading, and she's...
Okay.
Yeah.
We just wanna make sure we got it all that we need in there.
Yes.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
No discussion? Okay. All those in favor? All right.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We wish you great fundraising, so- Phase One and Phase Two can be done at the same time.
Okay. Item number twelve? Move on. Or do you need a break?
Do it. I need, I wanna get out of here.
Okay. Item number twelve. Consider and take appropriate action regarding council approval to proceed with the issuance of a request for qualifications to solicit a facilities management feasibility study and design services. Mr. Sly?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, what I'm asking for approval from the council tonight is to proceed with a RFQ, soliciting professional services, to consider or- or conduct a feasibility study of municipal facilities that we have currently and what those needs may be in the future. Uh, and really, and- and to then pursue design, uh, efforts based on council approval of whatever we decide, uh, after the feasibility study. Uh, this is obviously a, uh, the preliminary step to, uh, a future police department or whatever morphs from that feasibility study. As we've talked on many times, we- we wanna try to get all of the- the planning and design efforts of whatever it is our future holds, uh, so that if and when we get to that position of issuing long-term debt for municipal facilities, we can turn dirt. And- and I know we'll have some additional discussion about that in our upcoming retreat, but I would like approval to at least solicit qualifications for professional services.
I- I move to proceed with the issuance of a request for qualifications to solicit a facilities management feasibility study and design services.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. If I could, I guess, question back to Time Manager Sly. So, is this, I'm not seeing an obligation to award an RFP.
We'll come to the council for that. We'll do our, um...
This is an RFQ.
Well, it's- it's an RFQ then, and then the next thing from there is, uh, is- is an RFP on- once- once you select that process. So, is it- is it an obligation to take the next step?
You can't do an RFP on design, um, services. It's an RFQ.
You can do an RFQ, but then you gotta define your scope for RFQ. That's where I'm getting to. If I lost you.
I'm kinda glancing over.
I just wanna make sure, if I approve this motion, to move forward with this, to go out to RFQs, that we're not committing- committing the council to make an obligation to award to a firm and proceed to the next step, because that's dollars.
Uh, what I intend to do is go out and- and solicit the- the qualifications, interview them, and then come to the council to award, um, the-
To hire the professional service.
To- to get- to get the work done. I mean, I'd-
Okay.
What Mr. Sly is asking for tonight is permission from the council to officially, uh, solicit, uh, qualifications from qualified firms to interview those firms and discuss with them our needs and the future planning. Then, we have to meet, under state law, we have to go with the most qualified-
Right, that's right.
-vendor to provide those services. We begin negotiations or discussions regarding what those services are, as finalized the scope. If we're unable to reach a decision or an appropriate fee for those services, then we go to the next qualified, uh, vendor of services. And at that point, we become the council and explain, this is the firm, this is the cost, this is what they're going to propose to do. All we're asking tonight is for the council to give staff direction to be able to go and solicit for RFQs.
Start that process.
And as I remember, too, um, we have five hundred thousand dollars-
That's right.
To help support, uh, the, this search.
Not the search.
Well, I- I know, but you know, I- you know what I mean.
I do.
I know.
I do.
But we do have some-
When we come back to you for the scope and costs, that's exactly where it'll get paid for.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Do you wanna tell us why? What?
Our-
Okay.
Later. Thursday.
Okay. Um, all right. Can, item thirteen. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the approval of a joint election agreement and contract for election services with Denton County and authorizing the mayor her designate to execute all necessary documents. Now, we did get a change. Oh, that was just a new runoff date in there.
Yes, they changed their runoff date in the proposed contract to match the area county so that everybody would be on the same runoff date.
Mayor, I move to approve the, uh, where did it go? Election agreement and contract for election services with Denton County and authorizing herself or designate to execute all necessary documents as amended at the dais.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Um, all those in favor? Okay. I should've asked for discussion, but... All right. Item fourteen. Consider and take appropriate action appointing two council members to serve on the audit subcommittee. Mr. Aguilera?
The audit subcommittee, uh, as of the last election is, we're- we're needing two members from council that we've done in the past. We've always, uh, had two council members serve on the audit committee to oversee the audit itself, to communicate with the auditors, to, um, go over internal controls, that kinda thing. If there's any questions about what type of work the audit committee does, I can answer that. But in general, you help oversee the financial sta- status of the- of the organization, and you also oversee, help oversee that we have proper internal controls in place for reporting.
Okay.
Last year, I think, uh, you and Margie Cantrell served on the audit committee. Doesn't necessarily have to be the mayor, but...
Doesn't, and they, in the other years, they always said I needed to do it. If I don't need to do it, that's fine, too.
I didn't see anything in the charter that required.
Not the charter, I guess I, I don't know.
Official handbook?
No. Uh, it wasn't that, it was the audit people were saying, think.
I think, yeah, they may have recommended that the mayor be on there, but I, uh, there's nothing in writing on the town, or the town, that says that.
I just know you've got a busy, busy agenda.
Yeah. Do, um, have anyone who is, would like to be part of the audit committee?
I'll volunteer for that.
Good. I was gonna appoint you. I was gonna appoint you.
Lucky you volunteered.
No, you know better than that. No.
I'm not gonna be on it if Bill Rose is on it. I don't have that much time.
Thank you. I- I would like to appoint, uh, Councilman- Councilmember Tiffany.
I'll go ahead and do it.
You're out of a job.
Well, I guess the question is, does- does the mayor have time, or does she- does she want to ser- serve on it again?
Yeah, do you want to do that?
We usually have the one meeting that we do.
Is it just one?
It's usually just one meeting at the conclusion of the audit.
Oh, I can do that. I mean, unless you want to do it.
No, if you're...
When is it?
I, we don't have it scheduled yet. It will be sometime, it will be sometime in March.
Okay. All right.
You guys, Danny, I'll work with you. Will you work with me?
Of course.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Do we need to vote on that? Patricia?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Mayor, I make a motion into appointing Councilman Mayor and Councilwoman Tiffany to the audit subcommittee.
Oh, are we voting? A second.
I seconded it.
You're going to second it. Okay. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, great. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
One day.
And if they need anything from me, you can know where to find me. Okay. Consider and take appropriate action regarding a proposed charter amendment to add one council member. It's just Sly or...
Madam Mayor, you've been submitted, you have, the Charter Review Commission submitted their amendments. I know that there was some discussion amongst the council about adding the seventh member or having a trigger mechanism. And tonight is really the only scheduled meeting that we have before. We're going to ask you to call that election in February, so I had to put it on the agenda tonight if you wanted to have that discussion. This really falls in the lap of Councilmember Rose. And I'm going to turn the floor over to Councilmember Rose and let her make his argument or state his case. And we'll comply with whatever the council's direction is.
Well, I'll make it easy. I'll put it on, I'll make a motion and if I get a second, we'll discuss it. If not, we don't. Okay, I move to add one council member amendment. Proposition to go forth for the charter election in May. And that council member would be added at the November 13 election.
I'll second.
Basically, following the discussion that we had last time on this, Councilman Strutter was talking about trigger points and populations. And so what I did, and it's in the packet here, what I did is I took a look at the populations data back when we added the vote for the mayor at the 2000, May 2009 election. I'm not going to read those numbers to you. But long story short is we, if it was approved, if the added council member, added council member had the vote was approved at the November 13 election, I mean, and it occurs at the November 13 election, you still wind up with a single vote representing more citizens than what was represented back before they added the vote to the mayor. The ratio, we're looking at roughly one to 1,500. The smallest, I went out and studied some small cities below 6,000 population. The smallest one that has a mayor and six council members is Nassau Bay. The ratio there is one to 584. Eight, then I looked at cities between a population of women. Oh, looking at cities that have less than 6,000 but have seven members on council. And there are eight Texas cities that do that, and the average population there, the ratio is one to 672. The rest of that sheet is basically supporting data. In a TML survey at 2008, only five out of 256 cities reported having a mayor voting with 500 council members. So our current, current operation is in rarefied atmosphere.
Unique.
Unique is a nice way to define it. And then looking at 36 Texas cities, I found had a population between 9,300 rough numbers and 1,300. And those population numbers are from citydata.com. But more cities in that size range have seven council members, including the mayor, than either of any of the other categories combined. So based on that and the information that I've put forth before, I think that the citizens should be allowed to vote on this and discuss those issues and let them decide whether they'd like to add a council member or not. That's, I've said enough. Oh, I, let me brief all the red line in it. I started the project and wrote it so it would be effective and put the effective dates in it and sent it to the attorney. And she went, wrote back and said, don't think this is required for this reason or that reason. And so that got scratched, and then there were some other issues. And she said, I'm not sure that you really need that because of this and the state law or that. And so that got scratched. So that's the reason for the red lines, a lot of the red lines. And I appreciate the attorney's work. And to me, it highlights the fact that writing a charter amendment without an attorney's help is rarefied atmosphere also.
Well, I just, I guess I just have a question. We have a... Do more council people equal better government? Are we, are we going to have better government because of another person?
Well, your perfect representation would be seven people in the community and all seven of them on council. So you could make the case that as you move to a 250,000-member city and you still only have seven people on council that your representation, if you look at the representation side of it, you could say, well, no, I don't have the good representation that I had before all these other people moved in. But in my dynamic, it's, as I look at it, it's not a matter of population. It's a matter of the working relationship in the body. It's a matter of skill sets. It's a matter of the knowledge level. It's a matter of, as I talked about, the open meetings or the voting requirement, plural requirements and what you can do under the open meetings and work your way around it. The standard thing that I read is councils are made up of either five, seven, or nine. And...
I guess all I'm suggesting is that the, again, the Charter Review Committee recommended that in the near future for the council to consider another council person at the same time considering districts or whatever, which we also had somebody even speak to that, that would then spread the representation around the town. So do you do both of those at the same time?
I would suggest not.
But the point is, I think getting representation around the full town is more critical really than one additional council person.
I, when I was in high school, I was on the debating team and...
Were you?
Of course. And you know, the thing about being on the debating team is you never knew which side of an argument you were going to have to fight. So, and I'm kind of that way on this issue. On the negative side, the Charter Review Commission said they'd like to address it later because of the sheer number of amendments that were on the ballot. But the other side is, we're a growing community and we have a lot of qualified people. And as qualified people get elected and you don't have a bunch of old geezers like me up here who have a lot of time available. Clint's gone tonight. He has a, he's up in Seattle on his business and I, and I know Glenn travels a lot. And good representation requires that, we have some folks here. I am vehemently opposed to districts. Not because, for any other reason, other than when we go to districts, then we get involved with the Department of Justice and voter rights and, don't we do all that, Patricia? Don't we have to make a lot of reports and stuff? And we have to gerrymander districts so that we have all of these different, so that we're not violating any voter laws. And that bothers me. I don't, I mean, we're not, we don't need somebody from Washington down here looking over our shoulder right the way we run our town. So I don't have a problem with seven people. I don't have a problem with six people. I would probably like seven people because when everybody's here, we danger wouldn't have a tie vote.
Which, which, how often have we had tie votes?
Just once since I've been on.
Yeah, that's the only time for two years. Oh, just one financial question. What's the cost of a council person?
I say, nothing?
Yes, there is.
There's some ancillary costs.
Somebody's getting my share.
You're not taking advantage of it.
Some ancillary costs for traveling, training, and that kind of thing.
Okay, well, what is it?
It's in the budget.
Per, maybe, but what is it per, per council person?
I'll have to get back to you.
Please do.
I don't know.
If I could, I'd like to...
No, I don't care.
If I could, I'd like to address the issue of council member and districts at the same time. The problem, and I think I mentioned it before when they were doing their presentation. The real problem with that is that if you go and study charters where you have the council members, you know, the council member in the district, that goes in the same section. And so the difficulty is, the difficulty is, when you do do that, you wind up with the possibility of having conflicting charter amendments being on the ballot at the same time while you're, while you're trying to do this. So the, in my, it's not personally, you can probably do it, but there are an awful lot of pitfalls in my mind as I look at other charters to try to do that at one time. I think if your, if your thought process is, yes, we should go to seven at some point, then you need to do that separate from districts. It's either that or you do districts first and add the council person later, would be my thought.
That's a really good point because we know how it can happen that you have conflicting things, which is what got us into here. When we put the ma, when they put that the mayor would vote, the intention was that there would be another council member, and that failed. And so that puts us in the position where we need to have four votes to pass anything, which can be a problem. You know, if somebody's missing, all four have to vote. So we do have that issue. I'm of mixed feelings on it myself. I certainly would not want this to apply to the next election because then we would be electing four of the council in one election, which is not a good idea.
The way that's set up is the, we had the discussion about whether you could do it at the same election. This would be approved, if it's approved, would happen, the approval would happen in May, then you would, they would come on in November and they would serve roughly a year and a half. And that would align them with Councilman Strutter's next election. So then they would, then the sequence in town would be two, 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 or two, two, three is the way the voting pattern would go, the way it's currently written.
And just, my crack finance director just kind of whispered in my ear, the cost would be one penny on the tax rate.
What?
I'm just kidding.
I knew that was a good question.
I may have to withdraw my motion.
I knew that was a good question. Oh, goodness.
The purpose of the, the purpose is to get it to the citizens and let them have their vote on it.
That was a joke, Mr. Lamont.
Please.
Brought me in my chair.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
Oh, I guess another question you could ask ourselves as we're debating this, is this a want or a need for our town?
I need a vacation. I think it's a need.
Well, you know, that's an interesting thing because you made that comment and you made that comment now. And my question is, does putting a seventh person on here say that the responsibility isn't there for everyone? All the, I mean, yes, it happens that people can't be at a meeting, but that's not, it's not supposed to happen.
Right.
You know, I mean, it does, that's life. My point is, I don't want to create a situation where we've made it where people don't have to be worried about coming because somebody else is going to cover it. Just wonder about that.
Okay, I call question. I call for the question.
Oh, please don't say that. Now we have to vote on calling the question.
Hey, just do it and let's go. It is quarter till 11:00.
Okay.
And I have to listen to you talk.
All right. All of those in favor of calling the question? Okay. All of those in favor of the motion to place this on the ballot? Opposed?
Motion fails.
Takes four.
Takes four.
There's six.
Because the charter indicates it takes four affirmative votes.
No, for everything. Everything, that's one of the issues, is everything that we do takes four.
Y'all want to vote again, you just saw what the problem is.
Exactly.
We can reconsider, but it would have to be somebody that was on the prevailing side that would request for the reconsideration. So one of the two who voted...
Were you trying to influence this?
No, I'm trying to tell you, if you want parliamentary, one of the two people who voted against it can ask, reconsider the prior motion, and we're back into it.
Why doesn't the charter say four when you have a majority and if you don't, have to require a supermajority? That sounds like that's what, there's the amendment that needs to be made in the charter.
I absolutely know this to be the case.
That was the change at the last charter election, was to make a quorum four. And I think it was because the expectation was that there would be seven council members, but that's just my recollection of the discussion.
No, I think it's always been four, and it has been four so that if you, you don't think so?
No, it didn't used to be four before.
It was always a majority, and at the last charter election, it was changed to anything that has to pass must have four affirmative votes, regardless of the number of people present.
Because we've had only four people here and everything...
You've adopted a budget, I think, two years ago where a couple of people were out of town and it took four votes to do it.
Who came up with that amendment? Bill Rose?
I don't, I don't recollect.
Okay.
You know, I'm... I really don't want to reconsider this. I mean, I'm not, I'm not really in favor of going to a seventh person. I don't think it's needed with the amount of people that we have here. It was put to the people before and it failed, which has since caused some of the problems here. I just, you know, I would, and what I, I guess I have where the question is now, which, and for some reason I've failed to recall that mandatory four-vote process is that I would have had, because the charter committee never considered that piece in the charter review about the four and rescinded that.
And the reason it's four is why this works with six council members. You know, a tie vote fails. It's like having a, I mean, if you had seven members, you had, you know, it's the same as having a seven-member board with four people voting.
It wasn't a tie vote. The majority was in favor of this and stuff like that. When you have six and six present. But when you're, when you're missing one or something like that, like we want to have with Councilman Strutter, then like I said, then the motion fails even though the majority of the council present wanted to move forward with it. So...
No, if Clint would have been here...
He would have had four votes.
He would, he could have voted for it.
Perhaps, or it would have been tied. You know, the danger, the danger is, Councilman Strutter's, is exactly what happened three years ago when you adopted a budget. I mean, you were adopting the budget and the tax rate and you had four members. If you'll recall, those of you who were here, there were four of you on this dais to consider. And you had to vote unanimously to adopt the budget and the tax rate. No. She did originally?
No, no, it passed, but that, but that was the issue, is that if you did not unanimously adopt it, it would have reverted to the prior year's rate and budget.
Right.
So you're saying this is the last time that we'll have a chance to put any possible amendments on the election deal? What's the timetable when that has to be filed?
We will bring the ordinance calling the election at the 20, February 25th meeting. So I'd prefer not to be doing that in the council meeting if we're adding a ballot proposition. But that is when you will have everything in front of you. All the Charter Review Commission amendments and the like.
Okay, so in reality, if you were making Vegas odds with a six-member council, it's like the double O's on the...
it's like the double Os on the pavement field. The nos have an advantage. The House has an advantage that way.
Well, under, under the six, you do.
We're voting no, too.
Okay, let's move on.
I need to make one quick point. I wanna give credit for the, uh, for Attorney Adams. I pulled up the old charter, it was three.
Let's, let's... All right, item 16, Town Manager's lies update.
I'll be brief. I had community development. I have nothing to report. I thought we might've had some applicants, applications filed by tonight, so that's why I put it on the agenda. I don't, so I'm not gonna talk about it. I wanna, uh, correct the record from the last time we talked about the 114-170 project. I reported correctly that Denton County Precinct reported that they would be done by April of this year. And, and several of you made comment that that, there's just absolutely no way. We went out and talked to the contractor himself this year, uh, this past week and, and, uh, we're anticipating September 13 as a completion date. I still think that's a little aggressive. They're in phase three. Is that, or is that just to complete phase three of this project? Yeah. Completion, completion? Yeah.
Yeah, and they said sooner, you said sooner than that they were gonna...
You may have seen some, uh, some construction signs along the Solana Kirkwood area. That, that was simply some, some shoulder repair they've already done. They're in and out. There's, there's no, you know, they're not gonna divert our traffic or anything like that, but they're, they're already have completed that.
That won't put some main lanes probably pri, prior to the September 13.
Right.
Yeah. Well, that's exactly right. On the, on the 114-170 project, they'll open, uh, the 170 westbound flyover. And the 170 eastbound coming in, in the, uh, we, we would anticipate that in the next 30 days or so. They've still got quite a bit of work to do on the 114 through fare, uh, on in Torono, but, uh, they will start opening up components of, of that construction project as they can.
Golf carts, here we come.
And they're gonna, did they paint the bridges?
They have not painted them to date, but that's a part of it.
They're gonna paint them before they open it so we don't have to pay all that extra money?
Yes.
Yeah, they'll paint before they open them to, to, that'll be one of the last things they do prior to opening the...
We'll be retreating the end of this week, Thursday and Friday, and, and agenda's posted. We started field work with the audit team today. Today? So they're in town and doing their thing. Yeah, well, less than three months. CCPD is cracking. They've got a meeting Wednesday night in addition to the, the neighborhood meeting that I've got scheduled with, uh, Fresh Meadow on the, uh, the drainage project out there. CCPD will also be meeting that night and then has a public hearing scheduled for February 20th. And on the 25th, they'll come in and make their report and ask the council to consider, uh, calling an election to create the CCPD and, um, get rid of the, of the four A. Does all the four A. That's all I have.
Okay. All right, um, item 17, Mayor and Council Updates Regarding Training, Et Cetera. We had the Denton County Mayor's Crime Prevention Luncheon. That's all the Denton County mayors and the chiefs. Chief was with me. And we discussed a number of initiatives that different police departments were taking. Did you wanna add anything about that, Chief? No? Okay. Just, there were different initiatives that, uh, were being undertaken by the different police areas and an opportunity to share some information as to what was being successful or not. And, and interestingly, there was somebody that, you know, talked a lot about doing this, uh, community policing. And I was sitting there saying, you know, "Yeah, we've been doing that already." So it was really good. Tarrant County Women in Government, um, that was a kickoff luncheon with, uh, a lot of the, the mayors and other council women from the, uh, this area. They're trying to establish that organization. Had an opportunity to have a good discussion with Mayor Price from Fort Worth and that too, and I think that's gonna help us with some other things. And then, of course, the Elected Officials Conference, which was this weekend. Outstanding, again, I thought it was really good. I, I really learned a great deal. And, and I don't know whether it's more beneficial, the actual classes or some of the conversation that you have in between the classes because it, it's, it's really a great opportunity to get a lot of information and a lot of advice on how to tackle various problems. And I'd like to just give you guys the opportunity to comment on anything if you would like. I mean, this is Mayor and Council Updates, so...
Well, Mayor, I was just gonna add is that, uh, when you were gone and others, there was a Northeast Leadership Forum held at the Hearst Conference Center on the first.
Oh, right.
J.D. Granger was our keynote. Of course, everybody was expecting, uh, Congressman Granger, but, uh, it, uh, he took it well. And, uh, Mayor Trevino kinda rubbed it in a little bit, being the way he is. He had fun with it, but it was a good group packed house, so a lot, lot of good information. And, and the neat thing that J.D. did talk about is that the Trinity River Vision is moving forward and, uh, you're about ready to start seeing some real things starting to happen. I mean, the first phase will be constructing a couple of the bridges over dry land because it's less expensive to build them on dry land than it is in a canal. But then that's, then the next phase will be the diversion canal to connect it, which will create the island. But it's, uh, pretty impressive and it's moving forward, so.
That's the, that's the first time I'd heard of, of the, of the vision.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I'd, I had no idea what it was, boy, was I impressed.
Yeah, we heard about it, um, there, but...
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be pretty awesome. It'll be the river walking, I mean, eventually, another 30 years.
Twenty-twenty is what they said. I'm wondering if I'll be alive. May I say something about the conference?
Please.
Um, and I did actually go and I did go to the meetings. But I did go to the water meeting. And I just say this because we all know it, but water is the number one issue for the state of Texas. Period. But you know what the real issue is? It's distribution of the water from the east to the cows in the west. And that's the cost, that's the issue. And that's all about the buying and the selling of the water and I, and conservation, of course, is a big part of that. But I just think that we really don't appreciate that water is a big deal. And then I guess the other thing that I would like to say is, um, what was it? Oh, yes. I met with, um, cities, 10,000 and more, 10,000 to 50. And I had the opportunity to say and sing great praises for our roundabout. And people ask about it and said, "You need to call the Town of Trophy Club." They were real excited about our roundabout. And you know what? We have a great roundabout. So there you go. It's a great thing. So it's fun. Good, good stuff. Do you want anything?
Just really, real briefly, one of the sessions was on, uh, Open Meetings Act. Winding its way toward the Supreme Court. Caught a piece of local application from Attorney Scott Houston down there, TML attorney. It seems that coming into a meeting and sitting in the back with a quorum from your council and not being on the agenda, prior placed on the agenda, even if you don't speak, but if something that affects your organization is discussed, you're in violation of the Texas Open Meetings Act.
Yeah, that was a very frustrating presentation. One of the interesting parts about it that I thought was really interesting is that they pointed out how the legislature is not subject to open meetings. The state legislature is not subject to that act. So the hope of getting them to step up and make it either clearer or a little, give you a little more latitude is not there because they don't understand the impact of it. And then the newspapers bug them, so.
Oh, may I say one more thing before I, just for your information, tomorrow night, I'm meeting with the, uh, team for beginning to plan the July the 4th parade. And this is very similar to our little, our presentation, our full morning presentation last week is how do you create a town where people are connected and they feel passionate about their town? And you do that by using people within your town. Your, people are our resources and get them engaged in making things happen. And so this particular group meeting tomorrow night is being led by a, um, town resident with several residents. And their vision is to have a fantastic parade, July the 4th, including bands.
Oh, right.
Isn't that exciting?
Okay.
So get ready. That's what we're gonna do.
All right, great, thanks.
So if you have a float, get it going. A golf cart.
Okay. Item 18, Items for Future Agendas?
Speaking of that...
Anybody? Okay? Oh, yeah. All right, item 19, uh, Council to Convene Into Executive Session pursuant to Texas Government Code Annotated Subchapter 551 Personnel Matters to Discuss the Appointment, Employment, Evaluation, Reassignment Duties, Discipline, or Dismissal of a Public Officer or Employee. Number one is the resignation of the Town Secretary Shannon DePrater. Number two, potential search for a new Town Secretary, RMO, and a potential appointment of an interim. So I would like to use restroom. Okay, so...
Carolyn.
I'm gonna start having more phlegm, Councilman.
All righty, um, call, reconvene into a regular session at 11:28 PM. And, uh, we'll enter, there are items to consider and take appropriate action regarding the executive session. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Go, Bill.
Mayor, I'll make a motion, uh, to accept the, regretfully accept the resignation of our Town Secretary, Shannon DePrater, uh, tonight with an effective date of March 1st.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Regretful.
Yeah, we have to, I guess you know.
There you go, Shannon.
Well, what happened if we say no?
I always wondered about that, you know? Accepted.
Okay, you want me to do it again? Okay. Mayor, I'd like to make another motion to, uh, to appoint, if needed, April Riley as the interim Town Secretary slash RMO.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we need an effective date on that?
No, that's if needed, if, if we have a gap. Okay, all those in favor? Okay.
Mayor, I make the motion to adjourn.
Okay, re-adjourned at 11:30.